Day, August 19th, and this is a meeting of the Southborough Planning Board. The Planning Board is now in session. First item on the agenda is a discussion item, CPC Citizens Petition to Correct Appointment Authority. And this is you, Ms. Brascio.
It is, thank you very much. Colleen, will you do the PowerPoint? Okay. So just to give the board a little background and the public, I'm a Planning Board representative on the Community Preservation Committee. And the committee, over the last years, there's been some challenges on appointments. So we've come up with a citizens petition to try to correct that. So... Give me one second. Okay, perfect. If you go to the second screen, Colleen. So the purpose of this article is to correct Southborough's bylaw and bring it into line with Master General Law, Chapter 44B. Southborough adopted the Community Preservation Act by ballot in 2003. The Community Preservation Committee was formed by town meeting, April 15th, 2004, by Article 56. The enabling legislation of Chapter 44B does not require appointments by the Select Board, but by the Board Committee and Commissions designees, the designees represent. It was never envisioned in 2003 that by giving the Select Board appointment authority, the Board Committees and Commission would lose their own authority, given by statute. At the time, the thought was there would be a collective collaborative approach, working together. Next slide, please. "The Enabling Legislation of the Community Preservation Act, or CPA, specifically created the appointing process for the Community Preservation Committee and the required duties and authority of the committee to be independent of oversight from the regular practices and processes of municipal government. The intent was to create a mechanism where projects typically not funded, ones that have been historically left out of the regular budgeting process, and projects to preserve the character and vitality of our communities that was being lost due to lack of funding for projects. The CPA became the tool to preserve the special attributes of our communities, and the CPC were the overseers of this Community Preservation Act to make that happen. CPA is a smart growth tool that helps communities preserve open space and historic sites, create community housing, and develop outdoor recreational facilities. The legislation specifically prohibits funding many types of projects that traditionally get funded through municipal budgets. It is not intended to supplement municipal budgets for typical municipal projects." Next slide. So this is the Enabling Legislation of Chapter 44B, Section 5A. In it, you'll see that it talks about the different members of the CPC, including the Conservation Commission, as designated by the commission. It talks about historical commission, the same designated by the commission, Planning Board, designated by the Board, a member of the Board of Park Commissioners designated by the Board, and one member of the Housing Authority designated by the Board. So that's, those are the ones that we're specifically talking about tonight. Next slide. "Out of the 196 towns that have enacted the CPA, 175, or 89.2%, follow the Chapter 44B language as written, with members being designated by the commission, board, or committee they represent, and not appointed by town or city leadership. That leaves only 21 that require town or leadership appointment for the designees, who are the representatives from the Board's Committees and Commissions. Of those 21, only three were created after 2006. The commonality being that 18 were created in towns that were early adopters of the CPA, much like Southborough, which was adopted in 2003 by town election by ballot. The surrounding towns of Westborough, Hopkinton, Northborough, Ashland, and Sudbury all follow the MGL Chapter 44B language as written, and only require the Select Board to appoint the at-large seats. There has been much contention regarding the recent Select Board's refusal to appoint the designated representatives of the Recreation Commission and the Southsboro Housing Opportunity Partnership Committee, SHOPC, as well as holding the appointment of the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board member for a Select Board interview. Historically, in 20 years in Southborough, the Board Committee and Commission representatives have been appointed by the Select Board on a consent agenda as a formality, with the only at-large seats by interview, which again happened on 8/6/24, when a new SHOPC member was appointed by consent agenda. The next slide shows the towns and cities that appoint the Boards and Committee designees, whether it being a Select Board, a City Council, a Town Manager. You'll notice only one in Boxborough, where the membership is different from the assigned positions. That's because the Planning Board seat on that is an automatic seat." Next slide, please. So what the Community Preservation Committee is proposing is, you'll see the current language. We're looking to strike the final, last sentence. "The committee shall be appointed by the Select Board and shall consist of the following members, and in its place add the new. The composition of the committee, the appointment authority, and the term of office for the committee members shall be as follows." That is standard language within the other 89% of the towns. That is standard language, and probably 88% or maybe even a little bit higher. The next slide. So basically, again, this talks about what I had first initially showed you, that one member of the Historical Commission designated by the commission. The only thing we're going to change in this section is, we're going to add by a majority vote of on each of the requirements. And we are striking under number seven. The bylaw currently says commission, and it should be committee. So we're just striking that, that's a correction. So ultimately, we're not changing this section, other than by adding by a majority vote of. Next page. This currently shows you the cities and towns that have adopted CPA, the cities being in yellow and the towns being in green. And then the last page is, it's supported by, at this point, by over 100 residents that have signed the citizens petitions. And I'm hoping, after tonight, we can add the Planning Board to this final sheet as well. So basically, it's just a correction to, going back to what the statute provides. Southborough didn't have to add the Select Board, but when they did, it was just to be, create a more collaborative environment. And now we just want to put it back to what the statute requires. Any questions? Ms. Houlihan.
Thank you, Ms. Brascio, and for the footman that you had knocking on doors. I supported this as a personal citizen, and I think that it makes a lot of sense, having been at that meeting where it was contentious. And I do think that we should revert to simple language. So I would be in favor of a Planning Board vote. I would vote in favor of supporting the CPC citizens petition.
Ms. Demaria.
Hi, Lisa, thank you very much. I support it as well. I mean, anybody who doesn't like government overreach, you know, may support this article. And so, because there's this sort of unnecessary barrier. And so I agree with removing the barrier. One question I have is, will you get Town Council to help with any kind of wording issue, for example, on the warrant articles as you move forward, if you don't have the Select Board? And also, can you, as a committee, bring forward an article without it going as a citizens petition or citizen warrant?
So we could have tried to bring it forward, but there would have been no guarantees it would have gone on to the warrant. As a committee, we don't have the final say. So that's why we felt going the citizens petition was the correct route to go. Town Council, because it's a citizens petition, can't give us any thoughts at the beginning. But all we're really doing, we're changing minimal language, and we're making it consistent. And like I said, I went through all 196 towns, and it is very consistent with the language we're changing it to. So I can't imagine Council would have any issue with it.
Okay, thank you. And then moving forward, when CPC does bring the proposals to town meeting, would they always be citizen warrants? Or would you be able to just put it on the warrant directly? Future, not this year, but future.
You mean that the applications?
Applications, where you're going to the town meeting to vote for the funds to be allocated, right.
Yep, that stays the same. We're not changing that in any way. The only thing we're changing is the appointing mechanism. That's it. So everything else would stay exactly as it is.
Thank you. I support it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And I think that was the intention all along, because the way the bylaw reads, it says "one member of said committee as designated by." And as one of the members of the grassroots organization that worked to get this passed way back in 2003, that I think was always the intention, and I'm fully in support.
And I think a lot of people feel that "shall" means "shall," and it's not up to interpretation. So...
It's not legally that means you must.
Town Council feels differently. So again, that's the premise of, you know, trying to get this done and trying to correct, you know, additional authorities given outside of statute, as Town Council may think it is.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Anyone online? Do you want to make a motion, Ms. Houlihan?
I make a motion that the Planning Board publicly support the CPC citizens petition to correct appointment authority.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Demaria, yes?
Brascio abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Master Plan Implementation Committee Member Appointment. I think we just need to...
Yep, so if I can just say a few words. Last time, I think it was at our last meeting, I hadn't, or we hadn't heard from one of our members, Will Warren, about whether he was interested to be reappointed. He did show up at our last meeting, and he is, luckily for us. We simply hadn't reached each other. I want to let you know how busy people are on master plan implementation. Will is the clerk of the Southborough Public Accessibility Committee, the clerk of the Southborough Cable TV Committee, a member of the Southborough Trails Committee, and on NPIC. And so sometimes we simply just miss each other, because we're all running around too busy. So it was more my oversight, because we did vote for all the other members to be reappointed. So I would beg for your forgiveness tonight and ask if we would reappoint Will Warren for another term.
No apologies necessary.
I make a motion to appoint William Warren to the Master Plan Implementation Committee for a one-year term that will expire on 6/30/2024.
Second.
2025, right?
It's a one-year.
He had already expired, right?
These were the original expiration dates. So it's a one-year term.
From 6/30, though, correct? Not from the appointment date?
You would appoint him today.
So would...
Because he would have, I think he has to get sworn in by, from tonight's vote.
So the expiration is 8/18/2024?
No, no.
Or 6/30?
It always ends the fiscal...
Okay. So as amended, 6/30/2024.
Second.
2025.
I mean, feels like a Friday. 2025, thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Demaria, yes?
Brascio, yes?
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a Continued Public Hearing, MBTA Communities Overlay District Zoning Amendment. Oh, it's not time yet. Oh, no.
Well, we can do minutes. We also have Master Plan Implementation Committee report, if Debbie wanted to jump that forward.
Yeah, okay. So next item on the agenda is a discussion item, Master Plan Implementation Committee Quarterly Report.
Okay. Sorry about this. Okay, so there's actually two documents that I wanted to have you take a look at tonight. There's a lot of documents in the folder, in the Dropbox. As you know, we keep a large tracker of all the activity going on with all the Boards and Committees and Departments that have goals and recommendations. But I'm not going to present any of that tonight. We're working towards something more towards the end of the year, where we can quantify some of that information. But tonight, I want to talk to you about two documents. One of them is in the charge. And I don't know, Colleen, if you're able to just to put the document up that has the red text, the proposed red text. So this is just our, this is the Master Plan Implementation Committee charge. And we're proposing to make a couple of changes. One is that we've already received from this Board agreement that we would report to you twice a year instead of quarterly, which was becoming too much. So this just formalizes that. And we added a couple other parts in red. Let's see. Yes. So at the, we wanted to add, in the second paragraph, that, you know, what the group is comprised of is a subcommittee of the Planning Board. This is all language that's, that part's already been approved, but just to include that, it includes representatives of the original Master Plan Committee. The NPIC members felt that it was pretty important to state that. It also makes it very difficult to find someone who is going to replace our fifth member, because really, this has to be somebody who really is involved in the town already, knows what's going on, understands the whole master plan process. But we just thought, you know, that's a big part of what we are. And so that was something that the committee felt they wanted to add. And then, just going down the page, just adding in that the annual update is prepared for the Planning Board, and we added to submit the town, to the town report and share at town meeting, which we did do last year. So those are just the changes in red. And I guess at the bottom, where it says members, and this would go out on the, I think this would get out on the webpage, we would add all of our names and our terms at the bottom. We would add Will to that list.
Do you want us to vote to make these changes? Is this the Planning Board, or is this the Implementation Committee?
So Implementation Committee's already voted to make the changes. So if the Planning Board is okay with that, that's all right. But I think we should probably vote, maybe, just if it's okay.
Sure. I make a motion that the Planning Board make a, approve the Master Plan Implementation Committee update of the charge of duties, version two.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Demaria abstain.
Brascio, yes?
Okay. And then, just the second document I wanted you guys to take a look at is, at our June meeting this year, we had an agenda item on the Implementation Committee to take a look at the goals that really weren't moving, and for reasons that we didn't maybe have committees to do those, you know, take on those goals and recommendations. Or some of them, some of the committees, for example, EDC, had come to me very early on to say that they thought some of them should be reassigned. There's other ones that we assigned to Public Works Planning Board that we no longer have, because it was, the vote at town meeting dissolved the Public Works Planning Board. So there's been a little rearranging going on. And so I just wanted to let you know what the categories are. And also, just to premise by saying, this doesn't include any of our feeling about this at all. Like personally, I might feel one way, and maybe a Board member, another Implementation Committee member might feel another way. But what we're trying to do is really just move the ball forward. So if, thinking about it in the terms of, if the goal is stalled and nobody's working on it, maybe we can give it to another group, and it can be worked on. But knowing full well, it may not, because a lot of these have moved over to Select Board, and they're very busy, and they have their own goals, and that might not move either. So I'd like to get the Board's input on that. But generally, the categories here are pedestrian and bicycling. And again, this isn't to say this is important, because in my view, it's very important. But we don't have a pedestrian and bicycling committee. And that was one of the goals. So seeing as that's not formed, and understanding that the Select Board are not forming any new committees, the Master Plan Implementation Committee took in action to reassign those all to the Select Board. So, you know, let me just go through them, and I would like to hear any comments also from the Board. Sustainability Committee is another. Obviously, we don't have a Sustainability Committee. And there will not be one in the near future. So again, trying to move these forward. Some of these goals, you see, develop a five-year climate action plan, you know, strengthen and expand partnerships within the town and the state to develop climate change solutions. I mean, some of these are very important. The Implementation Committee felt that there could be someone in the community, for example, that might want to take this on, for example. I might like to take something on as a private citizen. But it's not moving right now. So again, no Sustainability Committee has been formed. I personally have asked the Chairwoman, Kathy Cook, if she'd be interested. Not this year, no, was the answer. So these aren't going to move, so they've been reassigned to the Select Board. The next is in the recycling. Obviously, that's solid waste, and that moves over. This is only a partial list, by the way. There's some that still have remained. These are the ones that the Implementation Committee are requesting to, or proposing to this Board, that they move in terms of responsibility. So a number of them have gone from facilities to DPW on this sheet. That's our recommendation. We have also spoken to Bill Kundoff about this. I know at least Sam and I have on one occasion, probably Sam on another occasion as well. And he's totally willing to take on these here that are listed for DPW. And then some other moving around. And the ones in the EDC at the bottom, these are ones that I've spoken to, you know, you, Mimi, and also Karina. Some of these, or these are the four that have been, you know, assigned to the Planning Board, and they go in other places, but they're under EDC. So that's just sort of an overview. I'd be interested to hear from individuals about whether you, you know, agree or disagree, or how you feel about this. Again, with the idea that we're just trying to come up with a solution to move it forward, to get some of these goals accomplished. There's quite a number of goals. I think this might be, I actually didn't count them. But it's, it looks like 15% of our goals, they're just not going to go anywhere unless we have a solution. But I'm happy to, you know, hear about other solutions, too.
Ms. Brascio.
Thank you. I just have a couple questions, and maybe you could even take them back to kind of get everybody's thoughts. Under pedestrian and biking, the last one on the page, drive for multi-use trail and sidewalk systems, it was under recreation, now it's under Select Board. Maybe that's something that trails should be involved in as well, where it talks about multi-use. And then my other three comments go to the Sustainability Committee, 2, 2, 2, 3, and 2, 4, where conservation spearheaded the municipal vulnerability preparedness. Maybe that's something that could better fall under the conservation for climate change and climate change solutions, and a long-term sustainability and resilience in response to environmental resource and energy challenges. So that's just a suggestion. If you could take it back, and if the committees, you know, the committee may feel very differently about that, and that's totally fine. But I just think that that falls well within the wheelhouse of conservation and the work that they've done. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Lisa. What were the numbers exactly? The 2.2 five-year action, right, climate action? And 2, 3, 2, 4?
Just, nope, not 3, 5. I think the rationale for recycling, you know, could stay with the Select Board, you know, they're in charge of the DPW. So, and then the other one was on the first page, pedestrian and bicycling, 3.2.
Yep.
Maybe add trails. Those were my suggestions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb. I really appreciate the Master Planning Committee. I know you guys are a lean group that really try to accomplish a lot of amazing things. So thank you for your continued diligence on this. It makes sense. I would say, just from a general perspective, I think a lot of these goals shifting to the Select Board is a concern, because I think we know that it probably won't be surfaced as a priority. I like Lisa's idea, too, on the conservation. For most of the comments, like facilities to DPW, if Bill is on board, I think a lot of those just seem like a good fiscal management of DPW, too. So it just, it seems like it's, it should be innate in what's their charge as an organization. Specific to Public Works Planning Board, there are a couple that I was thinking about. And the, you know, I think one that for us is, as we're thinking about, there's a lot of activity happening in and around the Route 9. And I know EDC is trying to look at that. You have ED 3.6, the continue to develop, improve the sidewalk network along the Route 9 corridor. But I think if, and it's hard to, I think with goals, to have, it's really important to have a primary. But I do think Planning Board should be involved with that, because I think we really can maybe help. With the request, I think, that we saw as in the latest elections, people were interested in trying to see how we can change zoning around Route 9. We know we have some deficits with sewage and some of the things that can really impact in traffic and some other issues that we've brought up. But I think we're trying to figure out how to maximize the value of Route 9. And I think it would be nice if there is some sort of, whether DPW leads it, but we stay involved in some way, shape, or form. So maybe from a RACI, like we're part of it, but not accountable primary. And then the other thing is, there's components around the Select Board, and it's just one of these things, these last three initiatives in here, the 3.3, 3.4, and 3.5. It's just one of those things that would be amazing if they could get, like, an intern from like a public, a college, or a master's program that's looking for kind of public policy or support of government. And just an idea to throw out to our current Select Board is, why don't we offer things like interns, where we can kind of get people to focus on ideas and have a project for limited investment? And other than that, that's all I really had. I think that personally, on the site plans and improvements for the parking and some of the things around the Planning Board responsibilities that were in the ED 2.2 to 3.1, I think those are challenging for us to achieve. So I would agree that moving them over, but I don't know if it's going to be any less challenging for anybody to achieve. So thank you again for the support. I just, it is hard to get these things moving, right?
Thank you. Appreciate that. I'll definitely bring this back to the committee. Want to hear from Mimi as well?
Thank you. It's nice to see that the master plan isn't just collecting dust on a shelf. Appreciate it. Is there a thought to bring back the Planning Board or Public Works? I forget the name of the committee.
Oh, I'll try to make it brief. I took it kind of a first and second pass at going back and hearing from the comments at town meeting, because remember, there really weren't that many comments.
No, they were grammatical.
Right. But what I did is, I created a kind of a short version, the abridged version, two pages. I basically looked at trails and CPIC, and I said, okay, as, you know, sections of the code, they're much shorter than that was kind of a lengthy four, three and a half, four pages. Let me see how my, you know, I can kind of make it a little more concise. So I did that, and just last week, I had a meeting with Bill Kundoff and Sam Stivers. It was a really informative meeting. And essentially, we have to understand, there's no, there's no will to replace the Public Works Planning Board with anything. So we would not have the support of the Select Board, even if I were to bring it to the town for a vote, which would be as a citizens petition. So I did, I did mention that. I was very clear that when I was meeting with Bill, I wasn't really representing the Planning Board. Remember, I was kind of put as part of a group to take a look at that, and that group did its work. We got the first Article 33 passed, but we didn't get, you know, the Public Works Planning Board dissolved, but it wasn't replaced with anything. So I came up with something, you know, actually, that was based off of all the work that Tim Litt had done, and, you know, Sam, and working with all the committees. So I have a two-page version. But if I were to bring it forward, it would probably be as a citizens warrant. So that's the first problem. But in speaking with Bill, and I think he was very honest, he didn't see the need for it, but he said something very surprising to me. He said that if it were a decision-making body, he would support it. So, and the reason I'm surprised is because we were very, very careful not to make it a decision-making body. It was advisory only. But what he said is, you know, it takes the load off of him sometimes, that, you know, there's a lot of things that go on that I probably don't even understand down at DPW. And if... And if there were a, and he has worked with a decision-making body before, whether it's public works planning, board of public works, whatever it's called, but that they, he has worked with a board in his past, you know, experience where they made decisions. And he said it's actually something that he would support. So that wasn't anything what we were thinking about, and it's nothing that's on the table. And, you know, what I thought is, well, we'll continue to look at this because, you know, I expressed my concerns that there were a number of topics that haven't had a public hearing. And I brought up specifically the Hopkinton Water Project, the, let's see, the water rates. I know that he came directly to the select board, but there was no public input on that. The St. Mark's, moving the intersection, never had a public hearing. We, of course, had a public hearing, but I mean, through the public works planning board. And there's probably, you know, and sidewalks. I mean, if a person in town wants to know what's happening on their street, they don't. They don't know. And I'm talking about myself. Like, I know that, for example, my road is scheduled to have sidewalks, and I have no idea how to find that information. So his feeling was, he's very open, anybody can come to him. But I expressed my concern that you have to really be in tune to what's going on in government. You have to know, where is the topic going to be at select board? Is it going to be at CPIC? Is planning board going to cover it? Is it going to pop up at EDC? You have to be really like a fan and know. We really should have one place where we can go and know what's happening on our street. And I, and then just the last thing I'll say is, he does have a position for an engineer. And I was very hopeful that he hire, would hire an engineer, and I could meet that engineer, but he hasn't hired that person yet. In my experience in speaking to people who have been town engineers before, worked in these sorts of situations with DPW, is they are the go-to person, and when they have the public works advisory or planning boards, that they usually give a list of what's happening in town and rundown of where the projects are. So we're really losing that by not having it. So I think that it has to be revisited, but it's clear that it's not going to happen right now unless somebody wants to bring it as a citizens petition. I have a pretty good warrant article ready to go.
So I'm very surprised because when we move forward with this, it was, this board supported removing public works planning board if it was replaced with the bylaw committee. And the planning, the select board was also in favor of that, as was Bill Kundoff. So I'm very surprised to hear that. And I've been, that Bill saying if anyone has questions, they can just come ask him. I've been trying to get answers on this Hopkinton water thing for however, four years or whatever how long it's been going on, and I can't get anywhere. And, you know, there are big public works projects that people should know about before their street gets dug up. So this, I'm very disappointed to hear this.
I can also give you a quick update, that we've been in the process of interviewing civil engineers for the DPW, and I think we're close, they're close to making an offer.
Oh, that's very good.
But I think that Bill envisions them watching road projects, like, so I don't think they'll be helpful to people to find out what's going on.
Well, is there anything that we can do as a planning board? Because part of the, I don't know if you recall this, but in the original warrant article and in the version that I made, the trimmed-down version, we would have a designee that would be most likely Karina, or a designee if Karina couldn't, a town planner or physician would be an ad hoc member, and I think that would have been a nice tie. But is there any desire to bring that warrant forward or take a look at it or anything, or anything else that we could do?
Just a quick question. In your internal department meetings, does DPW provide a list of ongoing projects and what's going on? Like, is that something that's internally circulated?
Not regularly. I think that if a question comes up to our office, we'll try and research it and go find an answer so we can point them in the right direction. But we don't necessarily have been getting anything circulated. Now, Bill's only been there a year, and there is a lot of information. So he's working on trying to implement systems, but in the past, not really.
Matt Probst, 31 Woodland Road, just wanted to deliver a comment. I'm the chair of the Municipal Technology Committee on this particular topic. This is definitely a huge frustration of citizens from our surveys we've done of visibility into what the town is doing, like, when's the pothole going to be repaired? When is the street going to be repaved, et cetera? So we've been exploring with Bill, DPW, possibly using software to provide that visibility for all town residents, not just provide visibility, but also the ability to report issues. And there's a piece of software that is actually just an extension to Civic Plus, which our website, our town website, are used, is called C Click Fix. And other towns around here are already using that, and allows people to both report issues as well as see the status of those issues. So just wanted to interject that, that we're currently under discussions with DPW about doing that, but it is definitely a known issue. There's some concern I've heard via the select board that DPW isn't fully responsive to making that change, but we are, at least MTC, Municipal Technology Committee, is very keen to get something in place so that all residents can see what's going on in town, what's, and what's the priority thing? Is the, is the pothole or their street going to be repaved this next month, or is it going to be three years from now? So, thank you.
Can I ask a question, Mimi?
Sure.
See, Marguerite, I know you're here. Is, I know you talked about a C Click. Is this what you were, you know, looking into? Sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I just figured you're here, and I know I heard you speak about it, and I just wanted to make sure it was the same program you were looking into.
Yes, it is. And the other part of it is in terms of Hopkinton, I think they've put it on hold for a while, the whole thing, to answer your question. Yes.
Thank you.
Anyway, just call me anytime.
Marguerite, can I just, is the C Click on hold as well? Is that, that proposal?
Some, some communities that use C Click find it's not helpful. Some find it's very helpful. So before we move to that, it would be good to make sure everybody's on the same page because it's a, there is a dropdown thing that the website has. And as I listen to you, one of the things that strikes me is, a lot of this, like what you were saying, Deb, should be accessible on the town website for everybody. There is a plan for when every street is going to get repaved.
So, and I think, but I think it's more than that, too, because I think there needs to, other towns, when they're doing big public works projects, like doing paving and sidewalks and everything, they have hearings that like the plans at 25%, 50%, 75%. We don't do that. And I've, the plans that I saw for, I guess, the Cordova Road project, that I don't know what happened to it, they, they were awful. And there were a lot of comments that I had, but I don't know what happened. That was the end of that.
Okay.
At least, yeah, maybe two years.
It was before Bill.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So it was the 25% plan. But who comments between 25 and 100? Not citizens.
Yeah, just wanted, add a comment regarding the, what was mentioned about other communities not finding C Click Fix helpful. What we're trying to get to the bottom of is, these are called in software, user personas. So internal employees in town is one user persona, basically the people who run the DPW. Another user persona is our citizens who want to get access to information. And I think there is some concern that if we deploy as a town a solution that provides full visibility and anybody to report anything they want, anybody to take a snapshot on their phone of a squirrel that's dead on the sidewalk, you know, that will lead to over-reporting of issues and too much, and also might expose too much information. So I think there is some concern about, from our DPW about being inundated with too many requests. And so we're, that's what we want to work with the DPW on, is balancing that. And I also want to find out from the feedback we've heard, is this, are those feedback from other towns' DPW departments or from the citizens? Because from my understanding, the citizens, at least the comments that I've seen, that on the towns that are using this, they love it. They love being able to comment on issues and comment to each other on the potholes. So I think we need to work, make sure we're appeasing all parties, including employees and the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Anything else? Does anyone online have any comment on that? Hey, now, we can move to the Continued Public Haring MBTA Communities Overlay District and Zoning.
Would you like me to give a brief update? Give me one second, I just want to pull up. So just a very, very quick update that after the last planning board meeting, I believe July 22nd, I'm not sure about the timeframe, if it was before or after that meeting, but we did submit a pre-adoption application to the EOHLC for pre-adoption review. So the compliance model, along with the maps that include three sub-districts, two individual districts within the half-mile radius, a district along Route 9 in the vicinity of Madison Place, and then up near the northwest area of Southborough, St. Martin Street. That, in addition to draft bylaw, was submitted. And at the, prior to submitting that, one of the directors, Chris Klutchman at the EOHLC, indicated that she would help expedite it through the process. So she confirmed that it was received and also confirmed that she spoke to the team there that there was a shift in the half-a-mile radius slightly to the east, as well as confirming the two lots on the eastern side of that half-mile radius would be acceptable for review. So we're waiting to hear back. We figure we'll follow up with them prior to the next planning board meeting on September All this information is on the planning board website under MBTA Communities. If you have any questions, you feel free to call the planning department. We'll guide you in the right direction if you want to see information on this. Also, all the information that was submitted to the state is in the planning board meeting packet that's found next to the agenda posted for tonight's meeting. So if you have difficulty finding it on the planning board website, you can also go where the agenda is posted, and it's in the packet with everything for the evening.
Just, just to give a brief overview of the MBTA Communities Act, the state legislature enacted a change to the zoning law, Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, which requires all towns that have a MBTA station or MBTA station adjacent to have, to zone for one reasonably-sized district for multifamily housing by right. And in Southborough, that means 50 acres, minimum of 750 units. And again, this is zoning. It's not a requirement to build any, build anything. And because we have a MBTA station in town, 10 acres needs to be within a half-mile of the, of the station. And the planning board has had this as an agenda item at over 45 meetings. We had two public information sessions and three mapping sessions, and the areas that we mapped were a result of those mapping sessions and feedback from the residents.
I have no comments. I know you put the, I think we can work on simplifying the slide deck for the town meeting, but I have it now, so I'll be sure to make my recommendations. Thank you, Colleen, for your work.
Mr. Maria.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I think the slides look great. I did have a couple people give me some, some feedback on the slides and say, you know, you really should create a slide that says how you got there, not changing the underlying zoning, trying to keep the character of the neighborhood, not having any one neighborhood that gets stuck with, you know, all of the 10 acres, that sort of thing. And I just wanted to pass that along because I thought that was, you know, we know how we got here, but maybe just to be able to convey that. But, no, that was my only comment on the slides.
Ms. Brascio.
Thank you. So I, just a, a couple of quick things. Marnie and Debbie, you'll notice on the table, there's copies of a couple of letters. I didn't know if this was something that the plant, is this the proper time, Mimi? Sorry. Okay. All right, thank you. I wasn't sure if this is something the planning board wanted to do. The longer one was actually created by Milton, and then the shorter one was created through, for the town of Newbury. But there's a lot of really important information in there for a handout. I think one of the questions I get asked the most is, you know, when Mimi says we have this information, you know, what have we gotten grants in the last five years? What are we looking at potentially losing? And then what specific grants? And the letter from Merrimack Valley actually lists out, at the bottom of the first page, going into the second page, there's 13 different grants that you could lose on top of the Math Works, I'm sorry, Mass Works Housing Choice Community Grants. I think it's a lot of really, really interesting information, and I just wanted to share it with the board. I didn't know if the board was interested in creating something as a handout for town meeting. I think Milton did a really good job at answering some questions, but again, that's just for the board to review. And I have a question, Mimi, if I may, actually for the planning board. And because I'm new, I'm just trying to understand, I went back through the zoning bylaw. Town council reviewed this, correct? The draft bylaw?
Yes.
Okay. So I just had a question specifically under establishment and applicability, where it talks about that the requirements of LID, special permit, shall not apply, but then it talks about that you could still use the performance standards, LID criteria may be considered? I don't quite understand that.
So, so by law, there can be no discretionary permits associated with this. So our low-impact development is a special permit, which is a discretionary permit. So although we can't require a special permit for LID for multifamily housing by right, we can incorporate the standards within the site plan review.
Okay, that was my question. I didn't know if they were contradictory in any way, and they're not. Okay, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Lisa, just your quick question. So you've, you printed these off. I didn't see them in the Dropbox, but I think they would be helpful to kind of do a copy-paste or an import and redesign, if you can share those.
Yeah, I didn't give them to Colleen until late this, I found them late this afternoon as I was preparing.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
So, Colleen, would you put them in the Dropbox?
Yes.
You did print them, yeah. She did, she was kind enough to print them. I just wasn't sure if they'd get in the Dropbox.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to have, and I'll go through these and work on it before the next meeting. And just, I just want to mention, to be clear, this is a requirement by law that every, all 166 MBTA or 177 MBTA communities enact the zoning. So one of, one of the things you will lose, grants, but you are still, even if you lose grants, you're still subject to civil action because it's a law. Yes, sir.
Hi, Howard Rose, 2 Bantry Road. First of all, thank you for all the work you've done on this. I have to say, though, I'm still disappointed as this board, looking out for Southborough, you mentioned this is a law. There are currently 16 other towns that have already said no to this and are fighting it. I'm wondering why this board, I encourage this board to reconsider and join that fight. It's 16 now, there's six more pending, and there's 30, 82 still pending. There's a big, there's nothing advantageous to this town, and I know you've got, have done a fantastic job of mitigating the damage. But at the end of the day, 750 units will add a third to our population that we just cannot absorb. Hasn't even thought about what it does to affordable housing and 40B and all that that comes after that. There is nothing advantageous to this. There is nothing advantageous to this town. I encourage this board to please reconsider and say what's really on everyone's mind, and no. If we have to do this at town meeting, what happens then? Because this board has the, you've been working on this for two years, you could have simply just realized after the due diligence and said, "This doesn't work for our town." So I would encourage you to look at that as another option before we get to town meeting.
So what is the other option?
Say no. Say this is not. There's letters from 16 towns before they even went to vote, most of, many of them, including Milton, I think was one, that actually sent a letter back to the state and said, "We will not comply. This is not good for our town."
So Milton did pass the zoning, and then it was a citizens' referendum that overturned that, and the Attorney General filed a lawsuit against them. So you would prefer to stay and be in court for years fighting this?
Yes, actually, I would.
And so?
Because people can be elected out, and this law can be revoked if enough towns, it's not, it's not, it's an unjust law. It doesn't go against, and that's why it's really in court. It's against actual state law of domain or whatever, I'm not a lawyer. But every other, the towns that are fighting this are fighting this on the merits that it's not actually legal. And if they're complying, we could actually join that fight.
So I'm unaware of this fight. I don't know who these towns are. Do you have a list of those towns?
Sure.
Okay. But it's Mass General Law, in like 40B, which people don't like either. It's been fought over and over and over in town, and it's in courts, and it's been upheld. The legislature can enact laws that municipalities are required to abide by.
And if they're found unjust, then what? So if this is in court and is in court with 16 other states, beyond the merits that it's not legal, then what?
It's in court with 16 others?
There's lawsuits. What was the, I forget the first town, but they're supposed to be going to court, and they're being sued for not doing it, and they're fighting back.
Well, Milton. Milton is the one.
There's 16 other towns that have said no.
I'd be interested to see that. So there are, so some, there were 13 towns that are Rapid Transit communities that were required to pass it by 12/31/2023. And 12 did, Milton was the only one that didn't, and there's been a lawsuit filed. Then there's another group who are, that we are in, that is required, and I think it's the largest group, to be compliant by 12/31/2024. And then there are others that aren't required until 12/21/25. So when you say others aren't in compliance, there's only one that's not in compliance, and that's Milton.
Okay. You know better than I. I'm not up to speed on it. I'm watching what I'm seeing just on news, et cetera, that there's 16 other towns that have voted no. They're joining that. So I would encourage us to vote no as well, and if that means a town meeting saying no, then we'll encourage that, but this is bad for our town.
So I.
So any guidance you have to defeat this, how about, would you be sharing that? Any guidance to defeat this? Everything I've been hearing this is finding a way to make this pass. What guidance do you have for this town for us to say no?
Well, as a Planning Board member, I feel obliged to abide by the law. So, and this was, this was intended, this was intended to help the housing crisis in Massachusetts and to encourage alternatives to large, single-family homes. And that was, the diversification of housing stock was one of the major goals of the master plan.
And forgive me, I see this as the state taking the easy way out and putting in our backs instead of the alternatives that are out there. So it should be fought.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you just say your name one more time, so for the, Howard Rose?
Howard Rose, Two Bantry.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Hi, Freddie Gillespie, 78 Southville Road. And I spoke a lot at the last meeting about why I thought the choice for the two lots on Southville Road that are ready to be built right away as soon as this is passed for 90 units. You can say 77 is what the compliance model says. However, this board has consistently said, "You don't build them, you just zone for it." And what you're zoning for is 90 units. And another misstatement is that the underlying zoning will prevail. And people need to know. Anyone who has by right 15 units an acre and can't fit them on has every legal ability to go to the ZBA. So we should fully expect no two-and-a-half-story-tall buildings, no setbacks, whatever it takes to get the 90 units in. But I don't want to begrudge that because I said it last time, and the Planning Board wasn't really interested in hearing it. So I will say, I was told to look at what other maps could be done. And I will say, during the mapping session, where you reached out with postcards to everyone in the half-mile, but not to the people who live near the lots you added in. That's interesting, don't you think? They weren't at the tables voting, "Move it to the east." Five tables said, "Move it to the east," but six tables plotted out the same lots in their neighborhood. And somehow, I lost the paper I was bringing, but I will tell you. Table 2, Table 3, Table 5. Sorry, Table 2, 3, 4, 7, and 8, all mapped out the same lots that were in compliance, that had by over five acres. You know, you had to shift them around a little bit, but the same lots over and over again, needing the 75 units and five acres there. And instead, you've chosen to move it in an unacceptable, I mean, you just said it was a housing crisis, and you're responding to that, then please explain why. In the rest of the town, the north side of town, there's not one parcel that's going to be built right away. And I heard this board say more than once, when property owners of large properties wanting to build, said, "Why didn't you choose mine?" And you said, "Because you heard from the citizens that they don't want ready to build." So you chose Madison Place, that's already built. You chose an industrial lot that's got a functioning business over on the Marlborough Line. And then on the south side of town, the most vulnerable area, you chose six acres that wasn't even in the zone, you had a petition for it, 90 units by right, and no, it's in the most environmentally sensitive area in town, mapped by the state as a core biodiversity habitat, right on the other side of the tracks. That's going to be negatively impacted by this. But there's no environmental review. Lower-impact development, I want to say, you're going to include it as a consideration. If you really think that's going to work, let's get rid of the special permit for all of the review for lower-impact development. Because you know, and I know, it's not going to happen. You might get some of it, but you can't make them happen, which is why a special permit's required. Or if it was, if it was so easy to happen, we wouldn't make everyone else jump through the special permit hoop. So am I upset about this? I am. No traffic study? Using other numbers, we're talking 450 to 700 cars trips a day on Southville Road, half one way, half another. I'm looking at 250 at a minimum going by my house every day that aren't going by today. Woodbury, Woodland, Oak Street, they're all going to get it. And if you don't think that's a concern, when you're passing this and you're saying it's a housing crisis, well, put the housing in the other parts of town that are going to be less impacted than Southville Road, which is already overstressed, underappreciated by the town, and your most vulnerable neighborhood with the most affordable housing in town.
Good evening. Bonnie Fanafon, 79 Middle Road. Thank you for the work. I have to say, it is a hard document to understand and follow, so I'm going to ask some very simple questions. If you could put up your District 1B, if you are able to do that. It says that the position relative to the principal street, you have Blenden Woods and you have Woodland. So does that mean two different developers could come in and build facing either one of those streets? Or you could connect Blenden Woods to Woodland, if you're really successful, correct?
Well, there are three separate lots.
I know, but if you, let's assume you're able to acquire two of them. Could you extend Blenden Woods to Woodland Road? Is there a way to prevent that from happening? Am I making myself clear?
So you're saying build on Blenden, but front on Wood?
1B, the map. One parcel is 2.77, it's on Blenden Woods. And the other two face Woodland Road. If you were successful in acquiring another property on Woodland Road and Blenden Woods, could you connect those two streets together? Or is there a mechanism not to have that happen?
To put a road through there, you mean?
Yes.
Well, other than the stream that goes through there, that would...
We have streams in other areas that have bridges. But there's no mechanism not to do that. My understanding? I'd be interested in the answer to that.
Well, so I'm not an engineer or developer, I don't know.
I know, but I, I know where there are bridges in town that fire departments have recommended. All right, and the excluded property in that zone as well, which is the Brook, the setbacks and the flood zone, I went to the FEMA map, Worcester County, and the majority of that's underwater. And actually, if you go to the fire department, they've had it, we've pumped out many homes over there. So is that land excluded? On the map?
We'll have to...
Five acres.
We can look by looking on the town GIS mapping. There is a layer we had put on there that shows excluded maps. Maybe we can pull that up if you want to wait to see.
That's okay. I'm just trying not to ask these questions on town meeting floor. And the easement, the driveway easement between the two properties, is that excluded?
Hold on, we'll check. Probably not. I think...
No, the easement stays, but it's not excluded land.
Okay. And then the other question I have on page 7. And then it runs into page 8 of the regulations. Building shared outdoor space number 5. Multifamily housing shall have common outdoor space that all residents can access, such as space may be located in any combination of ground floor, courtyard, rooftop, or terrace. Who in their right mind would want youngsters on a rooftop in a building? Is there any way we can strike that?
Bonnie, just reference one more time.
I'm sorry, it's on page 8.
Yep.
Number 5. Can you strike the word rooftop?
So that is the section that says buildings, it's section...
Shared outdoor space.
Yeah, it's general development standard, section G. Number 5. Which is building shared outdoor space, which says multifamily housing shall have common outdoor space that all residents can access. Such space may be located in any combination of ground floor, courtyard, rooftop, or terrace. So just say again, what, could you strike the word rooftop?
I mean, that could become a real annoyance to the abutters. You don't need to give me that answer tonight, but I'd certainly be interested in that if I lived in the area. The other question I have on District 2, Turnpike Road. Being a former selectman and representing you and part of the EMC project, back in 2013, there's a plan, you can see the outline of the road through the green space on your plan in District 2. That is part of MassDOT study area for road improvements on Crystal Pond Road. There's a number, there's a design plan. It hasn't been... I'm sorry, am I talking too fast? On District 2.
No, we're just a little bit slow, Bonnie.
Sorry.
It's not you. The machine's not responding quickly.
Next to Madison Place, you can see a road behind the three office buildings. In between Madison and the three office buildings.
Yep.
There is a Route 9 and Crystal Pond Road intersection improvement. That area there, I don't know if it's excluded or not. That's for the Route 9 improvement, which would bring you down to the Crystal Pond light. It adds an additional lane. I'll give it to you. There you have it. I was following up on that to see if they're moving forward.
Okay, oh, just, please, I'll grab it. Just thank you so much.
So you're saying that right there?
I don't see a point of...
All right.
You can see a cattle road, you see Madison Place.
This?
Yes. You know, the right of the...
Here.
That, but all the way down to Crystal Pond.
Yes, here.
To eliminate the, you can turn on the light. So I would check with MassDOT, MassDOT, there's a project number on file to see if they're going to move forward with that. That's all I have. But thank you for the work. And Hawkinson did...
They're coming back in December. Yeah, yeah.
I got a chance to comment?
To the microphone.
That you gave us in the line? Okay. So Mr. Hevy had provided a similar package back in July, right? And now you've added some information to this packet? Okay.
You want me to look into this?
My name is Bob Hevy. I own the property on the corner of Woodland Road, Route 9. And I'd like to talk about my property, which I've given you a letter on, and also the pieces that you've picked, which really kind of staggered me because it's the furthest piece of property in the town from the train station. I don't think there's another piece of property that's further away. You've got it designated as District 3. There's no entrance onto that property from Southborough. You actually only can get into it by going into Marlborough. Part of that property, I believe, is actually in Marlborough. I'm not, that's a dispute between the two towns. I am interested in how. But it is six-plus miles away from the train station. Somebody needs to get to the train, that's the furthest point to get to it. Doesn't meet very many of the criterias that the state has. I want to talk about my project for a sec, on my property. I'm two miles, possibly less, from the train station. I'm straight down Woodland Road, no turns, just stay on Woodland Road, it'll take you right to the train station. I meet just about everything that they ask for. I have sidewalks, I have retail, I got restaurants, post office, liquor store. Everything, it's in my letter there, but just about everything that the state says, type of things they want. Place for children, childcare, playground, there's everything within walking distance to that site. I also included a picture of what we're proposing. We're proposing a building that would sit on Route 9, which rests Route 9 automatically, including the factory there. Because quite honestly, I happen to be aware of the fact that I have the ugliest buildings in the town, like, sitting on this property. So I think it would be advantageous, if nothing else, for people driving through town. I don't know if anybody out here can see this, but just... There are no residential abutters to my property. I gave you a letter that was submitted to me, or to you, actually, from the Barris Development, which is the owners of Drugstore right next door that was in favor of this. I haven't found a negative on my property, and yet you haven't considered it. This letter I wrote, that you got, was sent to the governor of Massachusetts, Maureen Healy. Because I wasn't getting very far with you, I decided to see what she had to say. I also sent it to, I believe, everybody working, or just about everybody, on this I also sent it to, I believe, everybody working, or just about everybody, on this program for her. I did tell them I was going to reach out one more time to you to see if there's some resolution to this. If not, I will continue on with conversations directly with them. And from what I can gather, this governor's can be a tough cookie. She doesn't like people thinking they're just going to not do what's right. And you have an obligation. I know we're a snotty town, and we don't want any lowlights in the town. That's fine. But there's a lot of nice people who do have a right to live in this town. And I think it's time to get over there and come around and do what's right. Have any questions? I'd be only too happy to answer.
Mr. Hevy, we did allow you to hand out information at our mapping session. It was on every table. And all the properties... Excuse me, I let you speak. All the properties that were mapped were put through a rubric, and we picked the top three. And yours wasn't in the top three. So we gave you due consideration as every other property that was mapped.
I was there with some other people. And you are right, I did put stuff on the table, all the tables. Somebody there, I'm not sure exactly which person, picked it all up and gave it...
I took it, I took it back because you put things on the table with the planning board, and I didn't want people to think that that was something that the planning board was handing out. And I handed it back to every table. I said, "The owner of this property would like it to be considered." I said to every single table, so every table had your information.
I didn't see you give it back, so I apologize. I did know that.
I told you I would. I just said I didn't want it to appear as if it was part of the planning board information.
Okay, well, I didn't intend to make them think it was. I thought I was pretty clear when I spoke. That it was not that I was putting it up there because I wanted it to be considered. There weren't that many people there. There were less than a hundred, I think, altogether. You've had eight tables, ten tables. And there were people going around, all the tables, saying, "Don't do this, don't do this. Pick the ones that can't be developed." Now, you were there, you must have heard it too. I don't know the gentleman's name, but there was a gentleman.
I did not hear that.
Table. And he came to the table I was at, and he was pretty aggressive because I said, "Well, I have a piece that I think should be considered, and it's ready to develop." He says, "Well, we don't want anything that's ready to develop." So, you know, that wasn't the best decision of where people were who wanted to do stuff and didn't. There was a little bit of animosity in there. As I say, there's a few snotty people in town who don't want anything to happen. And that gentleman was one of them. Is there any other questions you'd like me to respond to?
Any other questions?
Mr. Hevy, thank you for coming. I know that I met you at your site to look at the property. I know one of our concerns, or my concerns, was just the water running through the property. I know it's a sizable piece of property. Ms. Luttrell, our chair, and the entire team put together a rubric, and we did go through the rubric. So I would agree, we gave the property fair diligence as we did the other property owners that came across. It did not pop up into the top five, I would say, not even the top three. What we've tried to do is put forward a plan that kind of hits every part of town, lower, middle and north. It is a law that we are obligated to meet, and we feel that the properties that were put forward and the rubric that we all agreed to, that's where we've landed. I would, I had encouraged you to think about other alternative ways that you could develop the land because there are other ways to develop the land that aren't just subject to the MBTA law that are viable, that could actually bring more affordable housing than the MBTA law, which is only 10%. And I think what we need is affordable housing in this, in this town. And so if there's an opportunity for you to explore other alternatives, and I know that I'm not the expert here on what those alternatives are, but I thought our, you know, our town planner and Colleen are very knowledgeable to be able to help you to support that. And I don't know if you did follow up with them. But that was our advice after the diligence process.
I can't understand why you intentionally picked properties. The one over there that I talked about is owned by an organization from California. They've just built a building there that I guess they pretty much control as far as occupancy on it. It will never be taken down. So that's one that shouldn't even be on there. It'll never, never get built. Of course, that's what you're looking for. But that's not the way the state's going to look at it. You're not playing the game fairly. You're trying to throw stuff in there to sneak around this, and I don't think you will.
So...
The state, when they step in, will step in.
We've been working very closely with the Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities. And they fully expect that some of the overlays are going to already have buildings on them. There are two towns that have been approved in the state, Lexington and Arlington, and their overlays already have buildings on them. So that's not true that the state is only looking for vacant buildings. This is a zoning article, it's not a building article.
You have a piece that is ready and could be built on. Why would you pick a piece that just had new construction done? That's, I don't, you know, you can dance around it in a million ways and say, "Well, we didn't do that." You did do it. You picked a piece that's the furthest piece in the town, number one, from the train station. It'll never get built for housing. The particular building is a specially built building. The owner's a California corporation. Do you think they're going to want to build housing there? Of course not.
I have no idea.
Well, I think you should research if you're going to...
Well, we did, we did not do deep research on every parcel that was chosen, nor was that our obligation.
You've only chose three areas. It wouldn't be a big deal. You go to the tax assessor, he could tell you almost everything you want to know on each of the pieces. Find out who owns them, what are they doing with them, and what's the chance of...
That is not our obligation.
I know. Thank you.
Anyone else on this? Anyone online?
We currently have 10 attendees and no hands raised in Zoom.
Mimi, can I make one final point?
Certainly.
So am I not correct in that the areas that were picked met the compliance model? And that they were selected at a mapping session, whether it was 25 people or 100 people? It was interested people in Southborough that came out and one of their voice heard. Am I incorrect in...
Three different mapping sessions.
Okay, thank you.
Mimi, can I add? In my conversations with Chris Clutchman, who was the head of what used to be DHCD, she's aware of what was picked here and that there's buildings on it. And she said that's what towns are doing.
Yes.
Bonnie Fannin again. All of you know I'm advocate for affordable housing. And I just listened to that conversation. And if you had, if you drove by each of those parcels that we picked as a community, I'm sure you did, I assume you did. The one that was just spoken about is separated from a road by a railroad track, and it backs up to the MDC, DCR filtration plant. And if this is family housing, you have to ask yourself, "Why would we pick that? Were we unaware that the railroad tracks separated you from the rest of the town? To a high school, to a school, to work? Or that it backs up to a filtration plant for the DCR?" I'm just trying to be fair here.
Hi, this is David Ferris, 78 Turnpike Road. I'm the direct abutter to Mr. Hevy's property. And, you know, the last time I spoke on this topic was about a week or two before you were getting ready to go to Town Hall. And I gave this board my frankly legal advice, as being a lawyer, looking at the spirit of a law, the intent of a law, and then never to confuse what others are doing and what seems the order of the day to be compliant and ordinary. And my advice at that last time I talked on this subject was, don't trust Bowler Engineering as your legal counsel. Trust your town council, who's the lawyer in the room. But I think in this case, you know, Bonnie raises a good point about the affordable housing issue. I think, I don't, never met Bob, other than seeing him speak before you. And being a direct abutter to a parcel that looks very rundown and unsightly next to the Walgreens that we own, I would like to see that changed. And I would like to see some affordable housing, or frankly, anything better than what's there. And I said in my last comments before this whole mapping session, and everyone relied on Bowler. And I warned this board, you go back and look at it on YouTube. I said, "Rely entirely on Bowler, and you're going to end up with a major problem." And the problem may not manifest itself immediately, but later down the road, when people, you know, start, one case is won in some random town, then it trickles over. It goes back to the spirit and intent of what the legislature was trying to achieve with this law. And it's quite obvious they were trying to achieve some level of affordable housing. So I think Mr. Hevy's point of, for lack of a better term, including a rubrics that heavily weighs towards existing structures where you know there won't be built, it becomes very transparent what's really going on, is to avoid construction for affordable housing. But you should own it and just say that's really what it is. So a guy like him doesn't keep coming to the mic confused. And from my standpoint, being a direct abutter, who's probably the most impacted individual in the community with an unsightly building on it, I think this is what good planning boards do. They work with the developer or the owner of a parcel, and they help entitle it so that there's a path to improve the look and corridor of our community. Right now, that corridor in the community is unsightly. And all you have to do is read the news and look at how many Walgreens are closing. Right? There's a lot of them, and they're closing because they're not seeing the frequency of trips. The math is three and a half million of revenue for that store leads to 11 million of prescription sales. That's why we bought it. The way people keep going to places like that, and that becomes an urban center, is because it has some critical inertia. What you don't want is a dark, empty Walgreens when the term of that lease expires, or frankly, before it expires. And the way you keep a vibrant community is when you have an opportunity that's a very light, low lift to change the entitlements that run with that land with a guy who doesn't have a lot of wherewithal to do it and a huge legal and civil engineering team like we do, is you give him the opportunity to include his parcel. And I think, I said this before, and the last time I gave this advice, I really think it should be noted by all of you. Two weeks later, the entire Bowler model blew up. So the model may be compliant now, and I think it probably is. And I thank you for the work because I know it's a lot of meetings, and it's a lot of time, and nobody's being paid for it. But I do think as a direct abutter in that one location, it's an upgrade for everybody in town. And maybe it provides some affordable housing that's really needed in the place that it really should be, which is on Route Nine and not in neighbors' backyards that have expensive homes that bought to be part of a more rural lifestyle. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Just to be clear, there's no requirement for affordable housing in the legislation. And we did not seek legal counsel from Bowler. Is that it with that one? No one? Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, 250 Turnpike Road, Contractors Yard Building Major Site Plan Approval. This is the opening of the public hearing. Sorry, we need to continue the MBTA communities.
I make a motion to continue the public hearing for the MBTA communities. Overlay District Zoning Amendment to September 9th, 2024 at 7:00 PM.
My second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none all in favor, Luttrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Emerya, yes?
Rasho, yes?
It's now the opening of the public hearing for 250 Turnpike Road.
Good evening. Would you like me to begin?
No, Karina will update us.
Okay, good to go. Public hearing notice for Major Site Plan Approval, 250 Turnpike Road, Assessor's Map 27, Parcel 2A. For Section 17410 of the Southborough Zoning Code, the Planning Board of the Town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, August 19th, 2024 at 7:10 PM in the Thomas J. McCalliff Hearing Room, Second Floor Townhouse. 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass. To consider the application of FD 250 Turnpike LLC regarding the property at 250 Turnpike Road for Major Site Plan Approval. This public hearing is regarding a proposed Contractors Yard with a 14,400 square foot new building that will house 10 contractor bays on the parcel which is located in an industrial zoning district and Residence A zoning district. A copy of the application and plans can be viewed at the Planning Office at the Southborough Townhouse during normal business hours or online in the Agenda Center at Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated or join the hearing by going online to www.southboroughma.gov/674/virtual-meetings. Mimi Luttrell, Chair, Southborough Planning Board. Quick update. So a quick update. Originally, we received a submission in May of 2024. It was not a complete application, so I provided information back to the applicant to provide supplemental information. Another round of information was submitted with plans. I reviewed the file. There were some fixes that had to be done. And then eventually, on July 11th, 2024, we received Submission Number 1C, which is now Submission 1, which was considered to be a complete application in order to file with the town clerk. Let's see here. On July 24th, 2024, we filed the Major Site Plan Approval Application with the town clerk. We received the application fees and a partial consultant review fee, which we were waiting so that we could get an exact estimate from Fussin O'Neill, which they eventually provided. Submission Number 1 was submitted to Fussin O'Neill. It was also submitted to the Planning Board and to Town Departments for Review. A legal ad was placed, was filed with the town clerk on July 24th. Legal ads went to towns and cities as required, I mean neighboring towns and agencies as required. The legal ads were run in August 5th and on August 12th, which we confirmed. We received two comments, two departments provided comments back. One was the Fire Department. And then also the Building Department. I believe that so far you have the Building Department comments, but we'll be forwarding you the Fire Department comments.
Colleen had forwarded that to us already.
This afternoon, right? Okay, so you did get that. Oh, sorry. So currently, oh, and then the applicant provided a supplemental review fee to cover the cost for the town's engineering consultant on August 14th. And also, just so you note, it was a second abutters list because the first one had expired. So they provided a second updated certified abutters list, which I believe was found to be similar. But they're only good for 90 days. And that brings us to this evening. We did receive green cards. They were required on Thursday. However, you brought them in on Friday. And I just want to emphasize that we have that requirement for Thursday so that we have an opportunity to check them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Before the hearing on Monday. So there were two... So there were two abutter notices that were returned or didn't come back. Did you get the envelopes for those?
No.
Return envelopes or receive?
Didn't receive anything back.
Did you provide us with the mailing slips for those?
I did, the white slips.
Good, okay. So all of those were there, except for two green cards were not returned. And that brings us to this evening. We're currently awaiting Fussin O'Neill's review of the Major Site Plan Application. So that brings us to opening of the public hearing this evening. Public hearing number one.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you could introduce yourselves.
Absolutely. Good evening, Chair Lotrell, Planning Board members, Karina, Colleen. My name is George Bonan. I'm Assistant General Counsel with Ferris Development Group. To my left is Ferris Development Group's Chief Operating Officer and General Counsel, Brian Charville. Also in the gallery is our civil engineer from Expedited Engineering, James Taitrell. And also in the gallery is the company's principal, David Ferris. We're here tonight to, tonight seeking a Major Site Plan Approval to construct a contractors yard building at 250 Turnpike Road. I'm sure you're all very familiar with the site, but allow me to quickly refresh your memory. The site is roughly 4.9 acres. It abuts Route 9 East and Parkerville Road, sits in both the Industrial and Residence A zoning districts. The west side of the property hosts a three-story self-storage building, formerly an office building, but you will remember that the applicant sought a Major Site Plan Approval not too long ago, and which was ultimately approved. The east side of the property has serviced the former office building as a parking lot for over 30 years. With the office building now having been converted to a self-storage building, the site simply does not need the parking it once did. Prior to applying for the Major Site Plan Approval in front of you tonight, the applicant acquired a special permit from the zoning board, which allowed two principal uses and two buildings on one lot. The one condition as to the ZBA's special permit was that the contractors yard building was to wholly remain in the industrial zoning district. The ZBA approved the special permit on January 29th, 2024, and it was recorded on February 22nd, 2024. Subsequent to the ZBA's special permit approval, but before submitting the Major Site Plan Application, Attorney Charville and myself had a pre-application meeting with representatives from the various departments in town. We listened to their concerns, their suggestions, and we implemented those suggestions into the site plan you see here tonight. I will, I'll now switch to the focus of tonight, which is the building itself. We are seeking to construct one new building, 60 feet by 240 feet in size, on the east side of the property, which is now, which is currently the existing parking lot. The interior of the building will be divided into 10 equal-sized bays, all 1,440 square feet in size. Each bay will have its own roll-up garage door, a hinge door in the front, and a hinge door in the rear for, that acts as a means of second egress. Due to the dip in elevation, the west side of the building will have 24-foot walls. The east side of the building will have 29-foot walls, but will appear and be level throughout. The building sits atop of an existing septic tank, a portion of which will continue to service the office building and the new contractors yard building, and a portion of which will be decommissioned, simply because it's just too large right now. The existing pavement to the rear of the building is to be removed and replaced with 20-foot-wide grassed fire lane. This is a pervious surface, which resembles a grassy area, but has the load capacity to hold emergency access vehicles. The grass fire lane will be separated from the rest of the parking lot by gate, which only emergency access vehicles can access. I'll note that the Fire Department Comment Letter that Karina had mentioned previously is in full support of this grass lane, this pervious surface in the rear of the building. Lastly, there will be no change to the ingress and egress of the site. The existing ingress and egress will be the only means of entering the site, and there will be no addition onto Parkerville Road. With that, I'll take questions.
Before you proceed, Mimi, can I just add a couple of other documents we got this afternoon, just so that everybody's aware? We did receive resident comments from a Mark Davis, 13 Skylar Drive, late this afternoon. And I'll forward that to you
Thank you.
in the morning, so that you can see what is being said. Do you want me to read any of it, Mimi? Or just note that we have this comment letter, email, from the resident? If that's sufficient for you, we can forward it to you.
That's fine.
In the morning. Then also, let me just check this, because this just came in too. Yep, that's 120. Put that in there. I just wanted to point out specifically, from the Building Department, that letter from the Building Commissioner, he opined that if there are eight or more parking spaces, there shall be provisions for identifying individual spaces through use of segmented bumper strips or other similar permanent means, according to 174-12B surfacing. He said, "I do not see provisions for the bumper strips as required." And then loading requirements. Per Section 174-12D, not fewer than the number of loading spaces indicated in the following table should be provided, and for buildings that are between 5,000 and 15,000, and for storage, one loading space is required. And then, he requested in regards to 174-12E parking requirements, an updated parking count to be denoted for both buildings by use on the approved site plan for future reference.
Yes, we have reviewed Commissioner Lund's comment letter, and those suggestions will, that feedback will be implemented in the second iteration of our site plan, in tandem with any changes that are a result of peer review.
Okay. And the Fire Department had also commented, and I just want to go over some of these, and that is, "All turns, access, and cul-de-sac will be designed to accommodate vehicles to the American Association State Highway Transportation Officials ASHTO Bus-45 Design Standards." So when you do your turning radiuses, just make sure when you're showing those, I didn't look at the exhibit myself, but Fussin O'Neill will review it, that it meets that standard of the truck turning, because there are different types of vehicles you can pick. And then, "All drainage, covert, septic system components, underground utilities, and chambers shall be designed to ASHTO H20 and HS20 weight loading." That's so that if fire trucks do go over, they don't impact the infrastructure.
Yes.
And then, "Access roads and streets require 20-foot-wide, unobstructed width per NFPA 1 Chapter 18." So I'm not sure about your access road. You have a 16-foot-long sliding gate. Is that?
No, that's, well, the gate itself is 16 or 18 feet. I can't, I believe it's 16. But the width of the accessway is 20 feet.
Okay.
So if it's a matter of extending the gate, we can do that.
Okay. And then, "Access gates must be accessible by either security or Knox Fox Key to the Town of Southborough." There's a standard comment on building numbering. And "Fire lanes must be clearly marked." We have agreed that the C side of the building will be grassed, however, will still be able to support the weight of fire apparatus. Standard condition for fire hydrants, at least 18 inches into the grass, et cetera. Seeing if there was anything unusual here. Adequate water supply and door numbering. So some of these are standard and some are specific.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure the public is aware of that.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, sorry about that. Just wanted, didn't want to miss it.
Thank you. Ms. Houlihan.
Yeah, I guess. So thank you. Nice to see you again. I just have kind of two questions. The first was around where it sits right next to the residential line, and just understanding if there's a buffer zone, because I would expect there'd be a buffer zone with the residential lot line between industrial and residential, and there's no buffer zone there. And then the second question is really just around the lighting plan. So I just want to say, thank you for a very thorough lighting plan. The only thing that I could not find was your Alcon, the last lighting fixture schedule, the Alcon lighting. There was no bug rating. I mean, everything else is perfect and right within our specs, and I just needed to see the bug rating for that. But it meets the lumenscapes, unlike the photometric person here on the board. So I was very happy to see that plan.
That was for the Alcon lighting?
Yeah, it was the last one on the fixture schedule. And it just, in the date, the information provided, potentially that the company doesn't provide this, but if I, there's just no bug rating. So it's right now, like, it's kind of a requirement, I think, by law, but they didn't give you that in their information package.
I'll see what I can do about acquiring that.
I mean, it's one out of the multiple. Everything else is well within the range. You fit within the photometric plan, so I was pleased. And I think my biggest question was just around the buffer zone.
Awesome. Mr. Maria?
Hello, good to see you guys again. So I just have also two quick questions. On the Fire Chief's letter, I couldn't quite make out whether these are things that he wants you to do or have already been taken care of. So his note says it's well within the 10-minute response time. Seems that he was pretty pleased. But are some of these things just not noted on the plan? Or have you spoken to the Fire Chief?
I have not spoken to the Fire Chief, but by the way the comment letter reads, it seems as though some of the things he had listed are just general items that he wants us to be aware of. And then there may be one or two specific items. Specifically, like, he supported the grass pervious surface in the back.
Okay. Yeah, I thought it was sort of a general letter too. And I said, well, he seemed pretty pleased with it, with his, you know, message on response times. The other question I wanted to ask you is, what do you anticipate the contractor base to be used for? Is it mostly storage? Or could somebody go in there and, like, start up a forge?
I would anticipate it being mostly storage of equipment or materials used by contractors.
Okay.
That's the best description I could give.
And the hours to go in there is, let me just make sure I understand it, because I think people have a right to go in and get their things, right? So it's the same as the Beehive currently? The hours of operation? Or can somebody go in overnight? They need to get their thing, and the things, and it's off-hours?
It's currently, it currently coincides with the Beehive's business hours at the moment.
Okay, and what are those?
Those, I believe, are yeah, it's early to late, so 6:00 AM till 10:00 PM.
Okay. And Ryan, I know I asked you, and you asked me three times about the noise, but I did want to bring up noise again, so we know we have a noise bylaw in town. And so I just want to make sure that if someone decides they are going to do something that makes noise, that there's recognition that we have a noise bylaw. So what will you do if there's complaints? And you may hear it on the property, because you might have residents there. How do you anticipate, if somebody says, "Well, I'd like to use this contractor bay, and I want to start, like, you know, grinding stones or making, you know, wrought iron signs?"
Yes, I think the best way of handling that is just citing the zoning bylaw on each one of our leases. And then if it becomes an issue, we could enforce it like any landlord would civilly.
Yeah, we have a lot of experience with this, especially with the office tenants. We've done hundreds of leases with all sorts of different operators. And now it's expanded to self-storage at the Beehive Building. And so we're accustomed to making sure that our leases cover, you know, anybody that would be an outlier use.
Okay. That's my question.
And I, just to go back to your first question, I think even though the Beehive hours are 6 to 10, we anticipate that one physical change is that if approved, this building would no longer have an access gate on the Route 9 side. And it wouldn't be unlike our office tenants, in the sense, at our buildings at 118 or 120 Turnpike, those office tenants have 24/7 access to their spaces by card access or key. But part of it is they have their space really at all times.
Yep.
And so we would limit the activities by lease about what can happen in their spaces, but they would have access 24/7.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brashaw?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for coming. Thank you for submitting very thorough plans. Just a couple of quick things for tonight. First, I wanted to thank the Building Inspector. I really appreciate his due diligence and his letters. And that only helps you as a proponent, but it helps us as a planning board. These were a couple of the questions that I had that he's already addressed. So that makes it a lot easier. Just two points. With the potential 40B coming in and using that same space, is there a way to map on the plans in relation to the building? It would be much easier for me to envision, you know, for the turnaround of trucks and whatnot, seeing, again, it could be a dotted line, something very simple, just to know that that's coming and where it may be in relation to this building.
I think it's better if we wait for the 40B site plans to come out, as they will shortly.
Okay, fair enough.
And it'll be much more clear as to where the access road or access way would be going into the 250 Turnpike.
Okay, fair enough. Just know that that's something I'm interested. Again, just for a comparison, to kind of see in relation to the building is all.
The basic path, if we're looking at what we have on the screen right now, would be in the blank area to the left.
That's what I thought, but
Route 9 at the north, down the tree line at the south.
It would just might be nice to see, that's all. And my next question is actually, Mimi, I'm gonna toss this one to you, actually, because I'm not quite sure, and I couldn't find anything on this. Knowing that it's going to be a contractors bay, and there may be articles stored there, is there any, does anything fall into the jurisdiction of Planning Board as far as if there's chemicals stored there? And how does that get addressed? Because I don't know the answer, so.
So Fire Department would probably be the likely jurisdiction. And then if there's any implications, possibly the Board of Health. I think that conservation would also be concerned for containment purposes, especially because they have the wetland areas that are configured as retention basins, but they are considered wetland areas. So any chemicals in proximity to that would be a pretty decent concern to conservation.
Okay, so it's not necessarily a Planning Board concern at this point, other than to just voice it? And again, I know you don't know who's going in there, and you don't know what they have. I understand that, but I just
I'll be able to answer that better next
Okay.
meeting, because I'm gonna look at a prior similar project where there were some pretty intricate conditions involved around what was stored and the uses, et cetera. So hold that thought.
Okay.
At the next meeting, we'll hopefully have some answers.
Okay, fair enough. And the last thing is actually for me, but I'll let you know. I intend to go out and just take a look at, excuse me, Mr. Freiberg's property. I know that this is in close proximity to the building. I just want to make sure there's adequate screening there for him as well. And I haven't had the opportunity to go look at that yet. But just so you know, I plan on doing that. Thank you.
Briefly back to access. Part of our commitment to the abutters regarding the 40B project is that access even to the 40B would be via Route 9 and not via Parkerville. So that's why it'll be in this path.
Yep, thank you.
Is that it? Thank you.
One question while I'm thinking of it. I noticed Mr. Stein was not here tonight. Is he expected at future instances of this hearing?
Yes.
Right, thank you.
So he will be providing Mullen's forms for the two public hearings we held tonight.
I want to be sure to ask while
No, I have it on my note to say it at the end.
Thanks.
Okay. On the previous site plan, there were existing trees that were required to be preserved as part of compliance with the landscaping, but they're not showing up on the existing conditions plan, and they were on the previous old plan? I'm hoping there's I'm hoping they're still there.
May I ask, which trees are you referring to?
There are trees on the western property line and then trees along Route 9. And also, well, that's, that's question number one.
I think that's just an omission on our...
James, can you just identify yourself?
James Tatro from Expedited Engineering to the chair. I think that's just an omission on our part because we knew we were, nothing was concerned with the upper self-storage part of the building that is being proposed here. And we simply, it's an omission.
Well, so it's the site. So I wanted to make sure that the site was as it was supposed to be. Also, there's an existing cherry tree that shows on the plan to remain and it has been removed.
Where's that?
Right, it's right to the, to the north of the eastern portion of the Beehive building.
We're going to call up the plan. Just give us a second. Oh, the current plan? Well, it should be shown on this as an existing, in the existing conditions plan of the current plan set that's been submitted under this application. There should be shown an existing tree there. So we're just going to pull up that plan. So if you go to the existing conditions on that...
I can't, I'm sorry, I can't speak to it now, but we'll look into it.
Mimi, just for, say, can you tell us where it is? Is it along Route 9?
I don't see that on...
So this is the existing conditions plan. So it should be on here. But if we have to, we can go back to the, the storage facility approved site plan, and it would be on there.
Sure.
Okay. Give us a second.
Yeah, you can find it with the... On the landscape there. Oh, don't leave it yet. Going to go landscape.
So, so we need to reflect it on the existing conditions plan, not just the landscaping?
Well, it's gone.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were saying it was shown on the landscaping plan.
It's showing on the landscaping plan, but it's not an existing tree. It's an existing piece of empty grass.
Also... So the, when the Beehive building was approved, it was for interior use only, but there have been garage doors added? And when that was done, landscaping was removed? So that's a violation of the site plan that was approved.
Well, with the approval of this site plan, then it will conform to what's been built there.
So somehow, the, all the landscaping that was required there needs to show up someplace else. So there's not a reduction in landscaping?
Or this board could approve this site plan before tonight, and then adequate landscaping could be provided.
Well, so I'm seeing the site as the site. So these things need to be addressed.
Yes, and our thought is that they be addressed by the board's approval of the site.
Okay.
So that then there's no inconsistency.
If I may, just to address David Ferris, the developer, on that. I brought some photos this evening. I want to remind the board that we do have a good faith bond with you that is about 80K. And there was maybe 13,000 that was descriptive of the remaining entire plan as it was to be completed from your requirements. So we have a schedule of those requirements. And we fully expect that Buss and O'Neal will hire their own independent arborist to come out and conform that that piece is done. But to the extent that there's anything that got removed that shouldn't have been removed, we'll obviously address that with supplemental plantings to meet whatever was taken out in a good, responsible area. I think the gate looks extremely unsightly. And we did it purely to comply with the plan and get our bond money back. And that was like 67,000 of the 80 in the bond, I believe. But I did bring an easel with pictures. And I'm happy to show you that where any of the old stuff that was really overgrown or dead in front of the building, we did plant new stuff. And the same thing on the side. And that may or may not have been in your plan, but it just looked like responsible stuff to do. So there is reserved money for everything on your plan. But most of what you and the board asked for to be planted has been done. There is still some probably remaining species. And if there was a couple that were taken out in the form of, like, they were dead or dying, we'll add back some. And I'm happy to have anybody on the board meet with our team out there and actually pick where they go rather than do it in a room like this. Because I think it's kind of an eyesore, frankly, the black gate, you know, that people are driving by now. And just putting some greenery there and while we're figuring out, you know, the whole construction period. I mean, it's years away. And so from my standpoint, you know, someone who lives in the town, I'd way rather have some permanent greenery in front of there, even required or not required. And if that, some of that could count towards whatever's missing, I think that's a better thing. If, even if the 40B were approved in a rush period, you're still talking three to four years of looking at a pretty unsightly gate on Route 9. And, and so, you know, I'm fine leaving that 13 or 14 full bond money, even though we've done most of what you've asked. But I would ask that the gate money come back without a big thing. I did want to talk to the board just generically. And I know this bond issue isn't exactly on the agenda, but the 250 piece is. I would ask for a goodwill deposit from this board to just, I brought an easel with all the fencing, the 750 feet. It is all where it's supposed to be, with the exception of the rear line. And what we did to accommodate direct feedback from Karina on this issue of utilizing that last strip of parking is we brought in temporary concrete blocks to effectively achieve what you were looking for, which is lack of access on the residential portion in the back. So we put the fence where it should go, which is behind whatever this plan will be, which is further back. And we blocked off the area that you wanted to make sure it didn't get utilized. And so we, we brought an easel of photos and some of the species that were planted. And all the lights that you asked to get reduced, we brought pictures to show that they were all cut down and reduced to significantly lower levels. And they're all on timers and they only go off when you walk up them, kind of thing.
So Dave, thank you.
Yes.
What I was referring to were plantings that, when you put forward your, your bond estimate?
Yes.
Those were things that were already planted?
Right.
Were required in the site plan but have since been removed.
Okay. So which ones are you referring to in the front of the building? Because I have photos of what we, we have. Let me, let me just grab it.
Well, so I know they've been removed. I was over there. And I was there, I was there prior to the, when you requested the bond and knew that they were there.
Yeah, so the, some of these were recently planted in the front. And there's some other bigger, tall ones on the side. But, you know, to the extent, you know, what I think would be the most practical thing is if something's missing, what was caused in the construction process?
Just come up with a list or one of our associates will go out there.
That's, that's what I'm doing right now.
Okay, yeah.
This is my list.
Okay, fair. Just tell me what you need and we'll get it in there. It'll probably take like a week. But you could still hold the full 13K till Buss and O'Neal does their thing. But I really would like the, the gate piece, which you could see the gates in and the fences in. I'd appreciate it if this board could...
But I, so I don't, that's not on the agenda. This is the...
No, I was more thinking it's, it's like the 250 contractor yard and it ties into this. And that's more of an administrative item that in most communities, like, if we're, we're acting in good faith and trying to achieve what you're asking, we would just ask that you kind of think of it like it's your money and it's our money, and maybe you return it.
So what we're doing is reviewing a major site plan right now.
I understand. Of, yeah, where the fence and gate are, yes.
Yeah, so in good faith, I'm going to continue on with my questions.
Okay, I was really stepping up to talk about the planting stuff. So you heard the message. If you give me a list of what's missing or you need and where you want it to go, we'll, we'll put it in.
Well, I wanted it where it was on the site plan, but garage doors had been put in, which was not on the site plan.
Yeah, so we could put extras that may be out on Route 9 where it'll give the building some more screening, maybe in front of the fence, like, that really is frankly unsightly that I didn't want to put in to begin with. But, and we could put more to the left and right of the door or different species there if that's what you think is going to give the building a little bit more screening.
I'll leave it up to your landscape architect.
Yeah, nothing was cut on Route 9. I just want to be clear about that. Thanks.
Oh, so on the landscape plan, there are circles and hexagons that aren't in the key. So I don't know what those are.
Could you tell me where you're referring to, Chair? Madam Chair? Mind if I, I'll come up if you don't mind.
Oh, yeah.
To the chair, I think some of those are existing trees. For instance, I see at the very northwest corner of the property, some circles which I believe are existing trees that he's simply not identifying on the landscape plan. Are those maybe some of the ones you're, you're, you're talking about? Also, also see some hexagon of, right above the brick wall. Yeah, again, I, I, those may be existing shrubs that he's, that he's simply not identifying on the landscape plan.
So those should be identified.
Yep, they will be. And just to be clear, it is the hexagons on the northern portion that, remember Houlihan just circled for me on her plan. And then there's a circle to the left of that that also needs to be identified.
Yeah.
Absolutely, thank you.
Also, there's a existing locust tree to the east in the lower parking lot that was to remain. And it's not shown on the existing conditions plan.
All right, we'll look into it.
And on the planting schedule? The eastern red cedar is identified as both TS and JV on the planting schedule?
I have to guess to the chair, is he, is there a distinction? Are there versions of this that are considered tree and considered shrub? Is that what he's doing there?
Kind of your plan, to tell us.
One is a tree, one is a shrub.
Beyond my very minor knowledge of plants.
Well, they have the exact same Latin names. So they would have a different name if it was a different name.
Chair Luttrell, above the TS, eastern red cedar, you'll see that those three items are trees. And then the next grouping are, is a group of shrubs. And even though they're of the same species, one is a tree and one is a shrub. And that's why they're identified differently. As, that's how I read the legend, or the key, rather. Do you see the same thing?
I don't know.
At any rate, the question, we'll go back to our landscape architect. Are these really distinct?
See right here, JV. And up here is TS.
Yes, and if you, so there are different groupings. One is a shrub and one is a tree.
And they're different heights. One's six feet, the other's five.
I'm not a landscape architect, but I would think they would have different botanical names if they're a different species.
I'll inquire with our landscape engineer as to why it's categorized this way. Yep.
And what is MP? I didn't see that on this planting schedule, but I see it in the plan.
Right.
Where do you see it, Chair Luttrell?
On my notes, right in front of me. Oh, in the, in the lower parking lot, there are those six spaces to the east. There's like a little landscape island right to the...
I see.
North of it.
Yep.
You're right, that's an omission that should be reflected on the planting schedule.
Thank you, we'll include that.
Oh, and on the previous landscape plan, along Route 9 to the north of the Beehive building, there were dogwoods and eastern red cedars that aren't on this landscape plan?
Those were proposed plantings, were they? Is he...
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think we're kind of in a limbo between what, is that an existing thing now? Has that been done? I, I think that's what the landscape architect was doing, was not taking for granted that that is in place. That was part of the previous approval.
Chair Luttrell, which, what plantings were those again?
Dogwoods and eastern red cedar.
Those were to be...
I just don't want to approve this plan and have a whole bunch of missing plants and missing landscaping and have it say, well, that's what you approved. But that's, they need, this one needs to jive with the other one.
I, I think in this case, the landscape architect was not seeing the perspective that you're putting forth there, that this should be a superset of the previous plan. And this one, he was only looking at what is new to this one.
Okay.
We'll, we'll reflect that. It, it includes all of the things in the previous plan. Good point.
And on the previous plan, the existing sign was to remain and just the name was going to change. And at the time, you didn't know what the name was. But the sign's been replaced. Do you know the size and the height of that sign?
Not offhand. We can provide it for the next meeting.
Okay. Also... So as we discussed briefly, the proposed 40B is going to enter through Route 9.
Correct.
But there's a section of fence that comes across in front of that area? In between the, well, it's in the industrial section of the lot?
Down here.
Yeah.
So here's the building.
Here's the building.
It may be more helpful if we look at this.
That is, that is correct. And that will be, will be removed if, if that is approved. But we're just not, I guess, we're not taking it for granted at, at this point. We're not.
Oh, in, so behind the Beehive Building, there's a new proposed driveway that wasn't on any of the previous plans?
Yes.
What's that?
That's to facilitate emergency access to the basement of the Beehive Building.
Okay.
There's already existing, uh, door, there's an existing door into the basement. And there's also a backup generator down there, but there's no way to access it now, it's just grass.
Okay.
So the driveway would facilitate that access.
Oh, and also, the fence was added behind the parking spaces that are, um, in the lower parking lot on the western side? And they're within the 20-foot no-touch?
Could you show us where on plan?
No, no.
We'll have to look at the, uh, order of conditions that the Conservation Commission issued earlier this year. But they did issue one that relates to this contractor's yard building.
But the fence is not there, the fence may, is, is like when you come into the gate, entering the par- parcel, right? Do you put the spot that, that on Route 9? Um, it runs about 20 or 30 feet inward and then it stops, so the fence ends.
We could move.
Yep, David Ferris, uh, the fence actually, I think where you're speaking of, when you come in the gate on the right, it stops. It doesn't run that side of the, uh, parking lot. It wasn't called for on the plan. It was about 750 feet, I think, and it was the front and then it was all the way around the property. But the side that's of the parking lot that's closest to the building didn't call for a fence.
Right.
Yep.
Which is, therein lies my question.
Yeah, no, there isn't one there, yeah. I mean, the, I, I think like just to be very transparent, uh, I said this with the neighbors who we've had a lot of meetings with on the 40B side. You know, we, we really did that because that was a condition in this, from this panel, we put that fence in. But our commitment to the neighbors for this 40B is that it really be a much more neighborly hood type of entrance. And from a self-preservation standpoint, we're not going to lease 32 townhomes having it look like a contractor yard. And so our anticipation would be a lot of the fencing type of stuff that's there now would ultimately be removed, which is why we kind of went the direction we did. We would even envision a fence that probably, uh, screens a lot of the contractor's yard buildings. So that when people drive in, it feels more like they're driving into a neighborhood, not through a construction storage lot. It, because it's going to be the only entrance and egress that, that's part of the commitment to the neighbors around Parkerville Road.
So there's not going to be an access gate there?
No, there will not. It'd, it'd probably likely be a stone wall decorative entrance and that gate will come out.
Um, there's a 20-foot landscape buffer required, uh, on any non-residential property along the full length of the boundary with the residentially zoned property?
Um, we feel as though we're adhering to that with the, uh, 20-foot wide grassy pervious paver, uh, not pavers, grassy perv- grassy pervious surface in the rear of the 20-foot and the rear of the contractor's yard building.
So you're saying that grass is a landscape buffer?
Yes.
I would, um, I would push back on that.
Okay.
Um, and also, uh, I'd like to see updated parking calcs.
We're going to do that pursuant to the building commissioner's request in his comment letter.
Okay.
Yeah, and the idea, just for transparency about where the building's cited, is a lot of work with the neighbors in terms of trying to keep it less visible to Route 9, but also keep it out of the industrial, uh, resident, or moving, like even though we'd probably by right have the ability, because this zoning line changes and runs through the parcel, to put it over the line, we're trying to accommodate neighbors by putting it forward, but not forward enough that it'd be an eye sort of Route 9. With the thinking there's a lot of woods between, including where the owner of 125 Parkerville, which is the closest to butter to the parcel.
I'm getting close to the end here.
But I do know the tree thing is a big issue for, for this board and I want to make it very clear from an ownership perspective, we're fully committed to exceeding whatever we're required to do on the tree count, just to be totally transparent about that. There's no, no daylight on that.
Um, in note number 18 on the, uh, landscape plan, any unforeseen tree and vegetation removals shall be in coordination with the project landscape architect in the town. That should be the, uh, planning board. Per our bylaw, any reduction in landscaping requires planning board approval.
Noted.
Um, I think that's it.
It's not too bad.
Anybody, um, in the hall have any questions or comments?
And I just want to point out that, um, these are the planning board's comments at this time. So we're awaiting Fasen O'Neill's review of the approval. So there'll be additional comments and there may be additional comments at the next meeting from the planning board, too.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
So Freddie Gillespie, I'm Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. We have not looked at this landscape plan yet, we're meeting on Wednesday afternoon. But, um, we were charged by the master plan to come up with a definition of native plants. So I'm going to comment on our, um, position of what that is. So first, I'd like to say it was very, um, encouraging to see this plant list, the shrubs on this. So, um, great start, um, and we'll go through it a little bit more detail, but I had a couple of comments that, um, and I was just thinking, my understanding is that the eastern red cedar, you know, it's, there's just a tree. But the name is juniperus, there's a juniper shrub, so maybe that's, I'm just guessing, sorry, but when you Google it, that kind of comes up. But, um, the, uh, flowering dogwood, which is native, but it has a serious condition with, uh, can't even pronounce it, but, um, anth- anthracnose fungus, which is killing most of the trees. And if you want a successful planting, you may want to look at that, um, you know, for long term. And then there's a plant here that's, so our, our definition is anything that's native per GO-BOTNY, which is the Native Plant Trust, as being native anywhere in New England will count, even if it's only in a small section of Vermont, which one of these plants is. Or on Dr. Gheer's list of plants for at-risk species, which are all local to our eco zones. And you have this, um, where did I lose it? The bushy St. John's wort, um, which isn't native to New England, but he also has a shrubby St. John's wort that's not native to New England, but on his list. And I have reached out to see, you know, if the bushy would be okay instead of shrubby or maybe recommend you use the shrubby. But as I said, the Open Space Commission hasn't reviewed this, but I'm just going by what our definition for native is, is anything native per GO-BOTNY, which is the Native Plant Trust database. As long as it's native anywhere in New England, that's, that's good and/or on Dr. Gheer's list. And then there was one other, the elderberry, I need to look into it because sometimes names change. There is elderberry that's native, but there's elderberry that's not native, so I just want to double check that. But, um, the Open Space Commission will look at this in more detail, but I, I did want to say, um, thank you. It's a really great list to start. Encouraging what I've seen.
Thank you.
And, and I would just note that this is actually as a result of previous review by this board on the site plan filed for the, uh, uh, self-storage facility, where there was quite a bit of critique of the plant species initially proposed. And this, uh, planting schedule reflects, uh, the improvement made as a result of that review.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Yes, sir.
Hello, John Palmer, 131 Parkerville Road. So I am not, uh, listed as an abutter to this development. Uh, I was listed as a direct abutter to the, um, to the Beehive permitting, um, so I'm not quite sure why I'm not listed as a, as a direct abutter for this development. I'd, I'd ask that of both the planning board and the developer first and foremost.
Yeah, it's different, I can answer it for the developer, it's different lots today than it was in 2022.
So just be a little more descriptive, so, um, Mr. Bow and Mr. Palmer can understand what you're saying. So previously, that was one large parcel?
Yes.
And that, um, impacted that abutter list? So when the lots got split? And now the northern lot is smaller than the original? Um, is that why you're saying he's not included in the certified abutters list?
Yes, there was a 2023 change to the A and R plan that modified the 2022 A and R that had led to the 2022 site plan approval.
Right, and the current A and R, or the most recent A and R, which has been recorded, that abutters, um, 300-foot radius does not include Mr. Palmer's property at 131?
Correct.
So in, um, Mr. Palmer, just for your own clarity, too, so you can check yourself, in the packet for this evening's meeting on the agenda, there is a copy of the abutters map.
I, I saw that, yeah.
And you're not included in that? If you're not included in that, that is comes, is a certified list from the assessors department, um, and that may be the reason why.
Yeah, so it had to do with the subdivision of the land.
That's what it appears to be.
But I also understood that there was some sort of, hey, if you're, you know, within 300 feet or something like that, you're, you're still considered a direct abutter. I don't know all the bu- the bylaws, but, you know, the, the point, the point I'm trying to make is I, I am a direct abutter of, of this proposed development. I can see the parking lot as, as clear as day from my bedroom window, um, and from my backyard. Um, especially now that, uh, the, the cleaning has been done of the, uh, detention pond and the tree removal, uh, uh, along the, the perimeter of the detention pond. And, and I can see that parking lot and that activity in the parking lot, you know, clear as day as, as a, you know, what I consider to be a direct abutter of the, of the property. So that's, that's my first point. I do like, I, I am growing, um, more in favor of this proposed development, um, especially because I, I, I don't like the current use of the parking lot. Um, you know, it's, it's, it, it doesn't look great, uh, as, from my standpoint, as a bu- and a butter and, and driving by the property on a daily basis. Um, so I'm, I'm growing accustomed to perhaps a building, um, as opposed to a parking lot of, of construction vehicles and, and oil trucks and, and the like. Um, so I, I, I do like, you know, the, the proposed concept here. Um, I would just ask that, you know, we, we, you know, hold this development, um, to all of the required setbacks and, uh, uh, landscape buffering zones and screening and, uh, for both light and noise, um, especially light and noise as, as close as I am to the, to the site. And then the last point I'd, I'd like to make is that, um, you know, we, we have had a number of very constructive conversations with, um, with the developer, um, between the developer and the neighborhood, um, with regard to the 40B. I like the direction that that's heading in, um, you know, but I'm, I'm looking to see more as it relates to their proposal there. Um, but I like the direction that this, uh, development is heading in. I just want to make sure it, it adheres to all of the required setbacks and zoning and so on and so forth.
Thank you. Yeah, one, so the, um, uh, special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals said as well as that the building shall only be in the industrial lot, that it's, um, interior use also?
Yes.
Okay, just to make sure. And then the other thing that I just thought of was that our noise bylaw, that our quiet hours are, uh, 11 to 7, yeah. 7 AM, so 6 is before that, so that will have to be taken into consideration.
So we have someone in the Zoom waiting room with their hand up. Fred Harvey.
If you could just introduce yourself, sir?
Sure, sure. Uh, Fred Harvey, 129 Parkerville Road. Um, so a question for, for Dave, Brian, you know, or George. Uh, with the addition of the, um, with the contractor's building, uh, do they, do they anticipate more activity within that yard than there was before? And the basis of that question is that, uh, uh, you mentioned about quiet time. And I could tell you that Diesel Direct, those trucks fire up between 3:30 and, uh, 3:30 AM and 4 AM in, throughout the morning. So as of right now, there, there, there isn't any, uh, restriction, especially, uh, for, for, for them. And I'm just wondering if, if more activity like that, uh, is, will be introduced, uh, with the contractor building?
If anything, it's going to be reduced because that sort of open vehicle activity will not be occurring when it's a contractor's yard building with the use contained inside.
But the, so the 3:30 firing up of engines that any sound that leaves the property line is in violation of our noise bylaw?
This is the first we've heard of.
Yes. Okay.
So we'll be happy to look into it.
Did you hear them, Mr. Harvey?
Uh, yes, uh, yes, uh, yes, I did.
Okay, so that, that shouldn't, that shouldn't be happening now and it should be better with the contractor's yard building.
Okay, but I could, I could certainly say that, um, it's, it is constant. And I know it because, um, I'm up that early because I have to cover some overseas conference calls. And, um, so if it goes away, great, uh, but, but it's certainly, uh, it starts early there in that yard.
Thank you.
What is that from?
I'm unsure.
Some oil, oil truck?
Is it, is it service to the site or?
He's into, yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Harvey.
Yeah, it's, it's Diesel Direct. I mean, there's, there's at least four of those trucks that are parked there. And, um, so, so, you know, I can understand them, the, uh, starting early to, uh, you know, fuel up the fleets. But, uh, yeah, there's at least four of them there, maybe more, I don't know. Um, I poked my nose over the, the fence, but, but yeah, I mean, it, 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 it's obtrusive at this point.
Thank you.
Can I just ask for clarification, what is Diesel Direct? Where are those trucks coming from and are they hanging out overnight? Are they refrigerated trucks or reefer trucks?
I think they're parked in the parking lot.
They park there.
Are they running?
Yeah, they come to and from.
At 3:30 in the morn-
Moving things in and out, or are they idling?
They're not stationary, no, they're trucks.
Are they storing themselves there, so to speak, on the storage facility site?
Well, they're parked there.
Are they paying to be there? Are they a tenant? Or are they a member, or are they there serving something else? Like, it's not clear what they are doing.
They're a parking licensee there, they have the legal right to park there.
They have the legal right to park.
So when the gentleman says they're, they're firing up, that means that there's someone coming in and getting in the truck and starting up the truck at 3:30 in the morning?
To leave the lot.
And all of them are leaving at the same time or something?
No.
Okay.
They can go at different times of day.
Okay.
Oh, so they store them there and then they pick them up from there, but they got to warm them up as diesels before they go anywhere?
I can't speak to the idling, but it is a parking area for them and they come to and from as they make, you know, the distribution deliveries.
So are they delivering something? Because that's different. Are they, are they, are they? they, they are stationary? Somebody comes in with another vehicle, gets in the truck or something, or are they actually making a delivery?
Well, it's a, it's a diesel fuel delivery service.
So they're?
They park the vehicles there when they're not making fuel deliveries.
They deliver opposite. It's like a holding place.
So they're, they're allowed to park vehicles there in that lower lot, and so they pay our tenants in that lower lot, parking the trucks?
Okay, so I, I think we need to make sure that we're, it's complying right now with our noise bylaw, which is an exterior noise standard unless further defined by standards within this bylaw. This is 130-30. It shall be unlawful for any person at any location within the area of the town to create any loud noise or allow the, allow the creation of any loud noise on a property owned, leased, occupied, or otherwise controlled by such person, which causes an unreasonable disturbance beyond the property line that disturbs the peace. So that's a remarkable statement that was added into our noise bylaw. And this is the reason, actually, that I always ask about noise, is because I think as a town, we, especially, we're thinking about putting mixed-use development in the Route 9 area. We have to be really more considerate of, you know, existing neighbors and also future neighbors. So I'm kind of disturbed to hear that. I guess they have a right to start up a truck, but it's unbelievable how many trucks just park, and they're reefer trucks, and they're running overnight, and they're doing things, and it's just really hard to control. So I would appreciate you do something about that.
We'll look into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so John Palmer, 131 Parkerville, neighbors with Fred Harvey, and I don't want to add fuel to the fire necessarily, but I, I will say the same thing. I didn't say it earlier, but, you know, there's an awful lot of activity there throughout all hours of the evening, all hours of the early morning, you know, back, trucks backing up, trucks starting up, you know, pallets being dropped. And, and that's why I'm actually growing more and more in favor of this contractor's yard building, because I think your intent is that, that, you know, that isn't the intended use at this point in time, and maybe the, the contractor's yard building, you know, makes it, makes it better.
Thank you. So that was one of the conditions of our site plan approvals that, well, it was, they haven't finished yet, but that we would monitor the noise, and if there were any complaints, we would get back in touch with them. So, you know, let us know. Don't be shy. Let us know if there's, if there's noise. And thank you, Mr. Harvey, for bringing that up. This is the first that the, that the proponents have heard, so hopefully that will get better.
I wanted to let the developer know first and foremost before I brought it to the attention of this board, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hadn't done that yet, but I had intended to, so.
Thank you.
Hey, I would just say, Fred, John have been good neighbors, and we've worked well with them, and I just heard about it as well tonight here. But the good news is, is I, I really appreciate how well this first meeting has gone and how productive it's been and cordial. And so I just hope we get it permitted quickly, and the quicker it's permitted, we're gonna go ahead and rip up and plant, put a pad site. I was hoping to get it done before the weather changes. So, you know, I, I think that just listening to them about some of the screening issues, I do think putting some green plants, like where we had to clean that retention base, and it's kind of a double-edged sword. There's huge water issues further up, and it's impacting a lot of different people. And we didn't necessarily want to cut those trees down in that cultivation in that area, but it's just, there's so much lack of maintenance up at Sarson's Way all the way down to there. We started at that end. We're doing the stuff behind the building with the Concom's permission to fix the second base, and ultimately, it starts up at Sarson's Way. But I definitely have seen the visual impact to the neighbors, and so we will work with them to come up with some greenery around that to give it the shelter or to get it hopefully back as quickly as possible to the way it was, which you really couldn't see it as much as you can now. So I'm very aware of that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Decision of approval from the storage facility. You might want to revisit some of those conditions, to make sure you're complying, and also with the new facility being added to that, because there are hours of operation and, you know, the planning board shall be notified when the facility will begin operating. So right now, you're really just functioning internally to the building, is my understanding, because the, yeah, but I mean, I think that once the temporary certificate of occupancy was issued for the building, it was interior work or interior occupancy there. I'm not sure. I just think you should just revisit that decision and look at the condition 11 regarding the times and notifying and et cetera, just as an aside.
Anyone else? Anyone else here? Anyone else online? Nope. So do we want to continue the hearing?
I make a motion to continue the public hearing for 250 Turnpike Road Contractor's Yard Building Major Site Plan Approval to September 9, 7:15 PM.
I second. 7:15?
No, 7:10.
7:10.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say MBTA usually lasts a lot longer than 10 minutes.
Yeah, just in case if something stops, you can go to either one. But either way, we just keep it consistent so the public knows it's in the set.
Sure. Seven, amend to 7:10.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, a trial, yes. Houlihan, yes.
Samir, yes.
Brashir, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Labor Day.
So can you follow up with me tomorrow to describe your deliverables, or are you gonna just wait for the Fasenonio comments? I think you should wait.
I think it's better if we wait, so we can just tackle it all at one time.
Right, otherwise, we're chasing a moving target.
Correct.
So soon as those come in, I'll let you know. We'll forward them right away.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is a discussion item, 218 Turnpike Road, long Cadillac site changes. You want to bring us up to date, Karina?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just gonna give you a brief rundown on how we've got here tonight. So back in January, there was a building permit application that was applied for renovations to 218 Turnpike, which is long Cadillac. And in those building permits online, a plan gets uploaded. So I looked at the plan, because planning has to sign off on these, and it was my understanding that it was just going to be kind of a subsurface structural change to the footprint, and it wouldn't impact the, you know, anything on the surface. And then there were some landscaping changes proposed as well. So I invited Jewett Construction, who's the contractor for this project on the site, to schedule a meeting with me, and Doug Raymore with Jewett City came in and met with me, and we looked at the plans. And so in looking at the plans, there were some additional site changes that were also being proposed. And then I believe we met another time, can't remember all of it exactly, but we met another time, and there were some more additional changes that surfaced there. So some of these changes were landscaping and some changes to surface from pervious, impervious to pervious. In looking at the plans, I noticed that there was a small section at the front right corner that was built differently than the originally approved site plan. So I asked them to look into that too, how that came about, because there were some small space, there were three spaces here that were lost. You know, and just to come up with information regarding these changes. And then also realizing that they were proposing changes to light fixtures. I believe it's along the front. There are 15-foot existing light posts there, which they're changing, updating the posts to the same height, but also updating the fixtures. So in doing that, I asked them to please provide a letter with some information so we could get some clarity on how significant these changes might be. And this culminated in what you see before you, the letter and the lighting specs. And then I asked for a photometric plan. I don't know if you had time to get an updated one, but the photometric plan was missing some information, so I advised them to revisit that. And the goal was to be able to present to the planning board and, you know, state your case that you are hoping that these would be changes that were considered more insignificant. I brought to their attention town code 174-10H, I think it is, which describes that if there are changes to the site, certain criteria will trigger modification. Knowing they're trying to move forward with this project, I recommend that they come before the planning board and explain themselves what they're doing at the site. And it was the planning board's decision as to which path this takes. But I tried to make sure everything was upfront, so you would know. All right, so in that.
Thank you, Karina. Welcome. If you can introduce yourself and if you have any presentations.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Paul Galvani, Triny and Framingham. I actually represented Long's on the initial permitting for this site back in, back in 2004. Next to me is Douglas Raymore from Jewett Construction, and Doug authored the letter. I want to just quickly go, go through these items. The, first of all, just quickly for some background and also introduce Scott Barry is the president of RH Long Cadillac, and Scott is here tonight. So RH Long Motor Sales Company, RH Long Motor Sales, Inc., does business as Long Cadillac. And RH Long owns both the business and the land and building. Just a quick fact, it's probably one of the oldest family-owned businesses in all of Metro West. It was founded by Richard H. Long in 1927 in Framingham, where it was for most, most of the time. So company is on a year, what, nine, over 90 years, pushing 100 years in business. It then was run by his son, Charles F. Long, and then by his son, and currently by Charles F. Long Jr. The, when we first, prior to permitting this, just very quickly, this, if you may or may not recall, this was basically a trucking terminal, truck repair. It was a large industrial building. There was certainly no landscaping on the site. And on the corner of Route 9 and Middle Road, there was a small building that was Red Bond Coffee and, and also a florist shop. And initially, it was contemplated that, that in some form, that building might remain. Anyway, it did not. So that portion of the site, which the board at the time was okay with staying as a separate little commercial use, is just, you know, was landscaped in trees. So that's kind of what's, what's going on, going on with that one. Cadillac Motors with their dealers is doing a, you know, up, doing some upgrades. And this project, it's called the Cadillac Facility Upgrade Program. And there's really two main components to this. It's a facade, front facade renovation, and a lot of interior renovations. There's very little actually being changed on the, on the site here. The front facade is such, it'll make the building look a little bit more uniform. As you know from looking at the building, you've got about three-quarters of the building, which is the Cadillac portion. The high Quonset hut style was, at the time, Long's was a Hummer dealer. And, and GM insisted that they build this particular building, and that's what they had to build. And, and of course, you know, Hummer, well, was history. Now it's been, now there's an electric version, but Long's doesn't sell it. So it, it's just all Cadillac. And the, the facade renovations, the upgrade is really nice, and it's going to make that, it's not eliminating the shape, but the facade's gonna be more consistent going across. So it's a, you know, it's going to be a very, very nice improvement to the site. As Karina said, there were some, noted that there were some changes between existing conditions and what was approved. So let me just quickly just reference that first. And then, and in the letter from Jewett Construction, those are items five and six. So as Karina correctly points out, on the approved site plan, there were three spaces shown there, which were not, which were not constructed. There are 294 spaces on the site, 170 are required. So, you know, we have a surplus of 124 spaces. It was frankly a mistake to even have spaces there. It's, you're very close to, as you probably know from the site, the customer service entrance is just a little bit past that. And what is, and, and what replaced that, you know, there's a kind of a crushed stone area in the sidewalk. And Cadillac, of course, like other manufacturers, is going to a whole fleet of, of electric vehicles. So they have two chargers, the, what's called a Level 3, which is the highest, and it's a, you know, DC charging unit, and also another charger next to it. That high one is, you know, is available for, for public use. Long's right now, the all-electric Lyric is actually their top seller. So it is, and GM is coming, Cadillac's coming out with another one, very shortly, a smaller one, another one about a year from now. So the, you know, transitioning to an extensive fleet of, of electric vehicles. So, so the charging stations are there, and it, and it's a, a good location for them. So that, yes, so that is one change, and we would like to, we would like to keep, keep that area as is without, without the spaces, because there's plenty of, plenty of spaces. So that's dealt with in number five of the letter. Now, on the, on the opposite side of the building, there is, on the left-hand side, which would be the side closest to Middle Road, there's a fairly large sidewalk area directly abutting the left side of the building. And Long's is willing to, and they just, they really don't use it. It was meant for additional vehicle display, and they just, they just don't use it. So they are willing, instead of having to create, either construct those three spaces or relocate additional spaces, tear up that concrete and put in landscaping. So that would be, that area is about 1,850 square feet. So, yes, it's right there. So they would take a good portion of that and, and put in, put in landscape and shrubs and trees. The, now going back, and this is item six on the letter, to the right side of the building, there was a small landscaped island, approximately 126 square feet, you know, fairly small. And the, there were a couple trees on it. The, there were a couple of trees on it. Um snow removal in that particular location was getting difficult and frankly. Car carriers, Long's does not allow any of their deliveries to be done on the on the road. And a lot of dealers do that, as you may know, up and down Route nine. They prohibit them. They have to come into the site. Unfortunately, as Scott has explained to me, you know, years ago, there were car carriers that were contracted by GM and the other manufacturers. You had professional drivers. Now you have kind of a hodgepodge of of kind of deliveries. What Scott has indicated to me, some of them are not that skillful. So that little island was taking a beating. And so, you know, so it's eliminated, but we're proposing instead of that hundred twenty-six square feet to landscape about eighteen hundred square feet on the opposite side of the building. And add more shrubs and trees. Now, one of the other issues was the facade. There's no increase in floor area of the building, but the facade is coming out just a little bit. There are uh both shrubs and trees along the building facade. They don't think they would be able to survive being transplanted and the 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 trees, the cylindrical oak trees uh that are there. Are right up against the building. They're too close. So we are proposing to just replant the same species. And have it comply with the the original plan. So those would just be replaced. So there's no change in uh in in landscaping there. In terms of the lighting, which is which is item one. All the lighting on the site, it's all fifteen-foot poles uh is in the primary field, as you know, is on the right-hand side of. Parkerville roadside side of the property and those are stained as is. It's just five. Five poles on the front. So the same height, fifteen feet, same type of style. It's just. Cadillac is is part of the image, just wants wants an upgrade there. So those are the ones uh in question. Now. Karina, Karina did point out that the, and she's correct, the the photometric plan that was submitted doesn't go to the site boundaries. It goes to the curbing. And the we, the lighting company is is finalizing a plan that will that will show everything and they have told. They've they've told Doug that it will comply with the regulations in terms of total light. Lack of light spill over and if there are any, you know, issues with uh if if anything doesn't comply, you know, fixtures can be adjusted. So what we would hope to do on that is, uh you know, we would submit a plan that that Karina can can review. I mean, it's the plans either go to comply or it isn't. There really isn't a gray area. It either complies or not. So we would, you know, propose to do that. And that certainly could be, you know, condition of uh of the building permit. But I I think, you know, when you consider these items, I mean. You know, we do uh really feel that they do constitute minor departures that that don't necessitate. Actually, you know, filing for a whole modification of the site plan because there's really. Those are the really only only items. Now, I think there's maybe a few other, maybe trees or shrubs that that maybe aren't there, but. Again, you know, planting, additional plantings is no problem and certainly willing to um, you know, to work. Work with with Karina to um in terms of uh a planting plan. So. That's kind of an overall summary of of where we are. So. And we appreciate that the time and work that she spent uh going over things with with Doug and. You know, we do hope to be able to um get start on construction as probably a, what I'm told, maybe almost about a nine months. In terms of both the interior and exterior renovations. So, but we're um, I think it's it's a very positive change in the site and I hope you'll agree that. I mean, I I can say with a straight face, I think it's the best landscaped car dealership I've seen on Route nine from Worcester to Boston. And they and they maintain it well. You know, I I've done a lot of approvals in my days and, you know, some of them, years later, I just shake my head. They just let things go. And here they haven't. And, you know, obviously, trees and shrubs have gotten bigger, so I think you have to take that into account, you know, even in in terms of lighting here. So. Anyway, so we would hope that you would concur that these are minor departures and uh. So we can uh get us a sign off and and start construction. But we will submit plans uh that will conform. To Southborough's requirements on on lighting. So.
Thank you very much. Ms. Houlihan.
Thank you very much for coming in. Um I'm the lighting person. I don't know if you heard that before.
No.
Help write that illumination dark skies by law. Um so just in reviewing, I think my only uh question. I would be supportive of of not going through a a minor site plan approval. I think my my concerns would just need to be addressed. So the the first is just around in the, your point number six of eliminating the eighteen hundred and fifty square feet. So so we now do this um square foot hardscape, your total um lumen volume. So it's it's kind of easier for you to do a photometric plan. Does that impact your your lumen um for the the lights? All your bug ratings are fine. Everything meets the the requirements. And so there is a calculation that was missing and I think Karina identified that.
Correct. Yeah, Karina did mention that. Um and yeah, hearing the the previous uh item on the board, apologized for not having the photometric plan up to. Up to stuff, uh like Karina said, we're working on that. Um as for the hardscape calculation, uh that's also an item that we're working on. The. Increase in the eighteen fifty and uh previous area. Um I do not have that offhand of whether that would trip anything, but um. We're gonna take a look at that and ultimately we need to apply. So.
So in your area, you have five lumens per square foot of hardscape. So you just multiply five times whatever that is. And I think that's going to be your differential. And I think you probably will be fine, but we just need to see the calculation. So I think that was my only concern. And then the only thing that I just heard is just in the facade and shifting some of those oak trees. So. We're a tree city and so trees are really important to us. And so now those trees have been there since two thousand four-ish. So the caliper, like just thinking about how big those oak trees are and replacing them with newborns and had if. Or whatever those will be, we would prefer that you replace them with the same size. So I think just trying to understand what you would be replacing them with, because you said they probably wouldn't survive the the move.
Yeah, so in regards to the columnar oaks, um so they, yeah, they have been there for going on twenty years, I would imagine. We'd be happy to work with Karina on uh caliper sizing. Um I don't have offhand what exactly those existing ones are at this point, but we understand, yeah, that. To maintain the look when it be planning.
I don't think we'd be able to get something quite that big. I mean, they're not huge. They're just.
Yeah, they looked narrow in the pictures. Yeah.
They're also now right up against the building.
Oh, I imagine. Yeah, I agree. Okay, so um those are my other concerns and I just want to make a comment is I moved to Southborough in two thousand two and um. I had heard about that uh site and really worried because I live across the street directly. When I pull out, I see on Route nine. You guys have done a really nice job. It's a be, it's a beautiful facility. I think you've done a really wonderful part of our community. So I thank you and um. I would applaud these efforts. And that's all I have to say. Thanks for coming in.
Mr. Maria.
Hi, Erin. Thanks for coming. Um I just wanted to make sure I understood completely. I I. Can you describe uh any change on the gate or anything like that having to do with the um. Egress, the emergency egress onto Middle Road.
Going on in the new in the back or the or either side, actually.
Okay.
We're really dealing with just the front and just really those two ends essentially. And then the the five holes in directly in front of the building. That's all.
And what will the building look like? Just curious. Do you have a picture or? It's a stucco building now, it looks like, right? Kind of?
Yeah, um basically, so the the changes is moving to, as maybe you've seen on the sign on the street. Uh it's more of a kind of black and white, uh less of the uh tan look that it is today. So it's a predominantly white. Metal panel that is a little bit uh, a little bit brighter than the existing look. Gets rid of kind of those hornaces on the top. And uh, like Paul had mentioned, uh especially over on the the Hummer side or the former Hummer side. Will all be largely the same color scheme to kind of make that match a little bit more, hide the age a little bit. And generally uh kind of brighten up the building a little bit.
Yep. So we mentioned the the items that have been changed. I also wanted to check with with Karina, but you mentioned the two, but there's actually the the third is the lighting plan. But on on the the corner of the building, you talked to, you talked about that, the island um that was removed. Is there an issue with plowing? Because I know these islands, they get, they do get in the way, but they're supposed to provide some sort of shade also. So were there trees that were also removed?
So, yeah, just to clarify that, um the island is further, if Karina or whoever's on the um screen could pan to the right a little bit. The other I can.
More. No, you were going the right way. No, the other way, the other way. Yeah. Keep going. Keep going.
Yeah, so so it's actually not.
And it's not that. It's.
It's right behind it. You can see the front of that car right there, right here. It's right there.
It it's not there any longer, right?
No, it's not. It hasn't been.
I was wondering, how big was it? Did it provide shade?
Yeah, we had we had shown it on our architectural site plan. It's actually right where those two arrows are in the middle.
Right.
Yeah, right there. So it was roughly a hundred twenty-six square feet. Uh there was one tree on it. But relatively small and our uh our hope is that with the additional trees we're planting elsewhere, uh that would more or less make up for that.
Okay. And um so I I'm on the fence as to whether it should be major or minor. I'm not as experienced as the rest of the board, but I thought that when we were replacing. The lighting, and I know that the lighting plan was provided, but that um that would mean that we would need to do a full review. So are you satisfied with what you've you've seen with the with the lighting and um? One of my questions, questions for Marnie also, but question for you is. Will the lighting be on all the time? Is it going to be different than it is now? Is it uh motion lighting for, you know, dark, you know, that kind of thing? Can you describe it?
So the the general intent overall is that there's no noticeable changes to the lighting. There are upgraded, like we had said, fixtures and holes in those certain locations. But predominantly as uh upgraded LEDs and just overall appearance. Currently, there is uh, there's reduced lighting after hours. Um as to the uh motion sensor, I can't speak to that. There's not, but um.
I bet Scott, you're gonna need.
I'm Scott Barry, the president of RH Long Motor Sales. So. The the lighting isn't, it's not going to change. We, you know, the lights go off at. Probably eleven-ish. I mean, there's some lights that are on there. I mean, I have to have some lights on at night. I got millions of dollars of cars out there. But you know, the lights in the back, they're, they project straight down on the back of the building. We've never had a complaint for a neighbor. But the, so the lights are on a timer. But if it's a cloudy, if it's a cloudy uh morning, you'll, you can drive by in the morning and you'll see that. The lights will still be on until it gets a little bit brighter, but we don't keep the lights on late at night there.
But there's no change. I mean, we have restrictions in the decision and those remain. So those, you know, we're still bound by. Still bound by all all those conditions. So no, again, no, no changes in that.
Okay. And then you're satisfied that what they're providing is dark sky compliance.
It meets all the complaints and I think it's just really clear to say that they're taking the existing and just replacing. So they're not moving them. They're not shifting them. And all of the the lights meet our requirements per the um dark sky by law. Thank you.
And just to answer your question, it's an increase in site lighting. So if they're just replacing and replacing with more compliant, more efficient lighting, that would not. Trigger that.
And we've, we've, they've now gone to all LED lights there. So.
Thank you. Ms. Brashio.
Thank you. Thank you for hanging around. I know that your time was, you know, earlier and unfortunately, it's it's just how it happens sometime, but we do appreciate you you hanging around. I I really have no questions for you. I I just want to say that as as Marnie has said, that, you know, Long's is a a great addition and has been for over twenty years in Southborough. You maintain the site beautifully. Um so um I have no, no questions. Uh my question, Marnie answered as far as being compliant. So uh I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleen, could you bring up the photometric plan?
So my question is, um your letter says five lights, you're replacing five lights. But the plan shows seven, so just trying to.
So I see. Two over on the western side. One, two, three, four. Kind of in the front and then one over on the east.
All right.
Two, three, four, five.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Okay, so it's six.
Well, just to be clear, what's what's being replaced and?
Absolutely. So uh can we pull back up the architectural site plan? So. One, two, three, four, five, six. Again, I don't know the photometric we're amending anyway. And as for the count of those, um we can also amend our. Our letter if that's.
So it's six.
Yeah, I I mean, I I see six there. So that must be a typo on the five. One, two, three. Four, five, six.
What's this right here? Light pole.
Yep.
Here.
One, two.
Two.
Two. Three.
Four, five.
Four, five. Six. So there's one of the same.
Yep, you're correct. That one's not drawn. We'll we'll amend that.
So just for clarification, there's seven poles. They're existing poles and they're already being used today.
Right.
This is just a replacement.
Same mounting height.
Same mount, LED, as you mentioned. Okay. Thank you.
So Ms. Houlihan's the lighting person. I'm the landscape person. So um and I I'm in agreement with the the rest of the board. I don't think this uh rises to the level of a. Modification. But um if you're in, if you're replacing plants, they're all being replaced at one-to-one. But if you're, if you're replacing plants, they're all being replaced at one-to-one. And can they be native plants? Because we really have a push in town for native species.
You'd rather have some of them changed, yeah. We just wanted to stay with the existing landscape plan, but if the board feels you'd want to have something else. I mean, the trees have to be something that's cylindrical.
So we have a street tree guidelines that if Colleen or Karina could send it to you, they do have some of those skinny trees in them. So anything that's, any trees that are in there, and shrubs that are native, and check on gobotany.com. And if they are native in New England, then that's fine.
Okay. Yeah, no. So the reason we had maintained those two species, our understanding of that was it was, you know, if we're changing to something new to make it native, but otherwise to keep to the group's site plan, which is why we did that. But if there's strong feelings that as to changing those species to something else, we can, for sure.
Well, there's strong changes, feelings here. Does the rest of the board agree? Because there are many reasons, and if you want me to go into the whole lecture on why native, I will, but I don't have to, but.
We maybe submit a sketch of proposed, now, I assume you do want us to do the, the new landscaping to the left side of the building?
Yeah.
Okay. So show you a little, a plan of that.
So any, any new plantings, any replaced plantings?
Sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Only if that 1850 meets the lighting. So if removing that challenges the lighting per plan, that's the, I don't know if it will. I think you'll probably be fine, but you just need to make sure that that lighting square footage.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll make sure we comply, and if it is close, we'll amend that square footage of additional green space to make sure we comply with both.
Okay. So I'm fine with having things submitted to Karina, and if it's what we agreed upon tonight, then it's fine.
So to recap, you would be submitting an appropriate photometric plan.
Correct.
Identifying the fixtures. Usually there's a little fixture table that says what you're putting, and it symbol matches with the seven lights. It should be demonstrating that there's no light trespass off the property, as was the original. And the plan should show, encompass the entire property line so that it can be definitively shown.
Correct.
Then, as far as the plantings, and we need the hardscape calculation included in that, and you have an electrical engineer working on that, or someone who could stamp that?
Correct.
Okay. So that will need to be stamped. I think that would be appropriate for the record. And then, as far as the landscaping, identify what you're changing and where it's going, and a planting table that identifies it. And then, I don't know if you know gobotany.com, if I had mentioned that to you, you need, make sure you check that. And then the last thing is the street tree guidelines that we have, they're on our website, planning board website, on the front page. If you can't locate it because it's a new, we haven't put everything we're supposed to be, we can send you a copy as well. All right? And then you'll submit that to me, you know, one copy formally, and then in PDF also, because I will forward the lighting information to Marnie as well, so that she can confirm what I'm seeing is appropriate.
Can that be like a condition of the, you know, like, building permit slash occupancy permit, so we can get started? But it's a good, be a condition of, you know, final approval on, sign off on the building permit, that those plans be submitted and approved by you?
Well, how long do you think it would take to get them to me?
Yeah.
Well, that's a little subjective.
We should be able to get them fairly.
Yeah. The.
I'm not right doing them.
The primary delay on the photometric is our electrical engineer, stamping engineer is on vacation this week, so that's.
So does this facade require a new, updated occupancy permit? Does the renovations you're doing, right, so we can't tie it to that? So I only have the building permit sign off on that?
Yeah, but, right, but the building permits still need to be signed off by everyone. I mean, I mean, after, you know, that the work's been done, I guess is what I'm saying. So, you know, I mean, because these plantings, you know, we may be looking at probably next spring. So we're not.
Yeah, but, so just to be clear, that when Karina gets the updates, then she signs off on the building permit?
Yeah.
But then if you have changes, we'll work with you on those, but you'll still be able to sign, sign off.
Well, they have to be acceptable. So I, they have to be acceptable.
So what she gets needs to comply with what we've discussed tonight.
Yeah, and if there's something missing in our, we'll review it as fast as we can. We'll let you know right away so that you can address it. We just did that with somebody else, too, who actually went through major site plan. There was some revision. So I need to get the information, review it. If there's any revisions, you have to do it. If everything's in order, then I will sign off with, based on planning's recommendation tonight on the building permit. So it's in your interest to get it to me ASAP.
Did you have a question or comment, Mr. Shpil?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Brian Cherwell, Ferris Development Group, and I appreciate being recognized during what I recognize is a board discussion item. On behalf of our company, which is a notable stakeholder in town, and also on behalf of our principal, Mr. Ferris, personally, I just wanted to say that we support what these gentlemen are proposing to do in terms of their modification. It's a real asset and amenity for the town to have this dealership there, and have it be independent like it is, and not corporate, national, transnational. And so anything the town can do to support it is really significant and important. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've done that.
Thank you.
Mimi, can I ask one quick question? Karina, do you have any vacation coming up that might affect them turning in anything this month? I know you sent the dates, but I don't remember off the top of my head.
I am out a combination of about five days around the week, two different weekends. So just get it to me, and on the, from the ninth to the 11th, I will have my laptop with me, because I have to zoom into the meeting on September 9th. But I'm hoping you'll get it sooner than that. Yeah. And what I can do is if it does come in, maybe I can give Marnie's town email, so anything you send me, copy Marnie as well. That way we'll have redundant coverage. Right?
We appreciate that, that question.
And if you have any questions in preparing it, just give me a call. We'll try and address it and then get you through this.
Good. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Do we get a Cadillac EV?
Seven of them.
Yeah. Don't say that. Don't say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, we did master plan. The next item on the agenda is a discussion item, 120 Turnpike Road, a comment letter to the zoning board. So we received plans, new plans for the 40B at 120 on, yeah, 29th before the hearing on the 31st. So we, at our last meeting, we didn't have plans, so we have them now in their meeting again on Wednesday. So I thought this board would want to comment. Oh, the other thing is that we do have a meeting posted for the, for Wednesday, but I'm on vacation. I'll try and zoom in, but I don't know. Oh, you're Zoom. 120 and 250, except there've been no new plans, so I don't know how much conversation on that.
So those are the, it's the ZBA meeting on Wednesday evening for both the 120 Turnpike 40B and also the 250 Turnpike 40B.
Okay. And so you're saying you posted a meeting for both of those? I was going to ask you about Park Central, because I thought that was coming up. Maybe that's a couple weeks.
That was.
September 4th.
It's still out there. If we could post for that one.
If you look in the Dropbox, we put the schedules up there, so you can quickly go looking up. But the ZBA website is also pretty good. Laura keeps that up to date. That's where we get it. Right.
Yeah, that's very good. Okay.
So maybe this letter's more important, because we're not going to be there. So any comments, Ms. Houlihan?
So my only comments that I'm still sticking to, and I think we should reference that we did receive stewardship committee and open space comments, which were both pretty helpful for me. My comments is I think five stories remains too tall. And I think as a town, we've, three stories is what we've gone for. We have four stories in the other 40B, but I think five stories is just, it exceeds, and I still am going to hold tight on that one. And then the other piece is the 6.2 really needs to be designated and transferred, and I think the points that Open Space made, that really encompassing concerns around the existing drainage swales, it's really, and it's not acceptable to include grading, and they did the cutting, should not be included in that 6.2. When that was originally offered, it was 6.2 conservation land that wouldn't be untouched and truly conservation land that could be leveraged by this town. And I don't think that's what is reflected on the plans today. So those are kind of my biggest comments. I cannot be there on Wednesday to attend the meeting, so I'm conflicted.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, those are my comments as well. I feel strongly that the 6.2 acre should be conveyed. I don't think it should be played around with like a, like a toy. You know, maybe we'll give it, maybe we won't. I think the longer that stays out there, the more, you know, torment it is, and it's the towns, and it belongs to the towns, should be conveyed. And I agree also, I just want to make the point, I mean, I think there's been, on the height issue, I don't know how we get to five stories, and I don't know how we're getting to six stories. And I don't see the need. But I've heard some people say, oh, you know, you always look at the matter that's before you, and it's not precedent setting, but it's definitely precedent, precedent setting. And now it's, you know, we're seeing plans for five and six stories. And, you know, we, we have in our master plan, for example, four stories along Route 9, and that's something that the town has grappled with. But, you know, I think there's nothing anywhere in any document that I've ever found that talks about anybody wanting five stories or six stories, even EDC. So I really, like, very much oppose that, and I think that we should be hold firm on that. Thanks.
Mr. Maria.
I mean, Ms. Brashio, sorry.
I don't really have anything to add other than, I just want to highlight that I did go out and take a look at the balloon when it was up, but it was really hard because it was windy that day, so you couldn't get a good read on the actual height. So, and I believe that there were supposed to be two balloons, and only one balloon was up anyway. So that made it really hard for me. I actually took a walk back in through the woods, and the balloon was white, and I couldn't see the balloon either, once you got into the woods. So it kind of defeated the purpose of looking at from the conservation land what I thought the benefit would be, to see it. So based on those things alone, and not being able to get a true read of the five-story, I support everything that my fellow members have said to go in the letter. Thank you.
So I got into the minutia here. My first issue is the subdivision plan. I couldn't figure out what it said. And the ZBA's comprehensive permit guidelines, which are required under 760 CMR 5600, that the ZBA shall have regulations, require that the submittals conform to the requirements of the Town Subdivision Rules and Regulations, Section 244-10, definitive subdivision. And that requires that the definitive plan shall be prepared by a professional engineer and land surveyor, and there's no land surveyor stamp on any of those. So it's unclear to know whether those are actual boundaries. Also, it requires an index sheet at a one inch equals 100 feet that shows the entire subdivision, so you can see what the actual lots are and the adjacent streets, and that was not included. Major existing land features, it's not showing all the trees, and it's not showing that historic stone wall that we mentioned at the sidewalk to be retained, and we were told that it would be, but it hasn't shown up on any of the plans. And I'm unclear what the way is, the lot lines, the frontage. On the plan sheet, D3, under waivers number two, referring to the 40B lot, it said it has no frontage, which is a violation of Mass General Law. And it's unclear from those plans whether there is frontage, because there's like a lot line, but not a lot line defining all the lots. And on Lot 4C, which is the parcel that shall be donated to the town conservation land, it should clearly say on that it shall be donated to the town Conservation Commission. And I think we need to be clear that that is a condition of a exercised and recorded 2019 major site plan approval. And it is not contingent on whatever happens to this 40B. So once the ZBA is in agreement with the layout of the lots, that 6.2 acre should immediately be donated to the town. I also, the grading and the removal of trees is unacceptable. And there was no, and there was no landscaping to replace it either. So they're just taking all the trees down, grading right up to the property line with Breakneck Hill. And then I think it's important that we encourage the ZBA, the, I don't know if you got a chance to look at the waivers that just came in. So the ZBA has been clear in, in all the guidelines you read on 40B, they say no blanket waivers, and the ZBA has been clear, and it's full of blanket waivers, including a waiver to waive the entire ZBA regulations on comprehensive permits, which were required. So I think we should request that known, all the blanket waivers are rejected. I was also concerned about the waiver on outdoor illumination on our sidewalk. The proponent and owner committed to following the outdoor illumination by law and being dark sky compliant, but yet they're asking for a waiver of that. And I know the question was brought up about ADA compliance, and there was, I didn't see any ADA compliance. Also, the walk to the playground, is that ADA compliant? It looks like it's going up a pretty steep hill. Also, I think we should encourage the board to ensure that the affordability on those rental units is in perpetuity. And then, and I know the fire department wanted access all around 360 degrees around the building. I'm not sure if that's possible. I think they should do, what's that, a turn radius plan or something? That, that thing, to make sure that they can get around that building. And I also went to the balloon test. In common. In common practice is that, well, first, that a balloon is floated at all four corners so you can get an idea of the building and the height. And it's usually red, so you can see it. So I saw the balloon when I was standing right next to it in the parking lot, and then I walked Breakneck Hill to see what the effect there would be. I couldn't see the balloon anywhere, but that's not because you won't be able to see the building, it's because the balloon was white and it blended with the sky. And I sent pictures I took, I took pictures right from the property line overlooking the parking lot. And you can see people standing in the parking lot where the building was, but you can't see the, where the balloon was, but you can't see the balloon because it blends into the sky. So that, that was very unhelpful. The site plan modification? So, we have met with town council on the site plan modification, and he's adamant that 6.2 acres would satisfy the condition in the site plan, in that he would be unable to defend in court the requirement that they have to come back from that, because that satisfies that condition. So, council's opinion is that our condition required 6.2 acres, the southerly portion, southern portion of the lot abutting the Breakneck Hill conservation land. It didn't require a particular lot, even though there was, on the plan, there was a line shown. He does not believe there was that, those specifics were in that condition. So that 6.2 acres in the southern portion of the lot, abutting Breakneck Hill, would satisfy that condition, so would not require a modification of the site plan. Although, the site plan will need to be modified because the site is changing, and the parking is all changing, and landscaping is being reduced. So eventually, there will be a modification, but not for that particular thing. But I think that, and Marnie mentioned this, the 6.2 acres was in its natural state, not dug up and denuded.
So just back to that site plan modification question. So, you said in a future state, it would likely still need to come back for site plan modification, and we have that limited oversight with a 40B, like lighting, parking, those kind of components.
So what would come back was, is the lot that remains, that the office buildings are on?
In the subdivision?
Yes.
Okay.
So that one lot, once, so ZBA will sometime approve the lots in the subdivision, if they're ever clear. I don't know what the lots are right now, because it's not clear from those plans.
And so I just want to make it perfectly clear that it's an unfortunate circumstance to the public that's watching, is we find ourselves in the same concern as a planning board, that we are guided by town council. Town council reports to select board. Select board has verbally advocated for this development, and so we will not be granted independent counsel. So we will lose the battle. So I just want to make that statement. So site plan modification based on town council would not need to be done on the 6.2 acres.
Correct.
I just want to add on that 6.2 acres, though. I mean, when Mimi and I and Karina met with town council, he said, you know, the land will be donated, has to be. And I guess we can just disagree that the line that's on the map, you know, means nothing, because it means something. It wasn't like it was, you know, from the 90s, it was 2019. And you have planning board members that are here, Conservation Commission members that remember what that line means, and that line is the line that was supposed to be the donated land. So I think, you know, I know that there's some discussion about the boundaries, a little bit cookie cutter and that, and that kind of thing, and hopefully that'll get worked out, if there's going to, I don't know if there's going to be any change to the boundaries or anything. But I think we can just, you know, make it clear that the land that's to be donated can't be denuded. It can't have a park on it, it can't have a septic under it. It's the land that belongs to the town for the town's use only. And I, you know, I can go to the meeting, so if you want, I'll make that comment, or any other comment having to do with this letter. But, I mean, I understand council's point, okay, maybe he can't defend it. Okay, that's fine. But for the people who served on the boards and looked at those plans in 2019, for those of you, might even be some of you, and conservation members, they drew that line, maybe it didn't have meets and bounds. Okay, I think that's what he said, lessons learned, right, for the future. Well, all right, but that doesn't mean that the line doesn't mean anything. It's meaningful, and that's the boundary.
From a municipal law standpoint, it means nothing evidently. Yes?
I'm Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. And our commission did look at this plan, and you've got our letter. I would ask you to argue for site plan modification on the 6.2 acres. It does not meet what was on the prior site plan. I don't understand how there could have been a requirement for a site plan modification for the past project, and this one here, all of a sudden, I said it at the ZBA, who waved their magic wand and went, poof, no site plan modification is needed? This 6.2 acres does not, I was part of the process for the site plan that, with the parking garage, we had long discussions about the 6.2 acres, and everyone was in agreement, and it was on the plan where it was to be. And I'm sorry, but if town council doesn't think he can argue that this 6.2 acres is not in compliance with what was on the prior site plan, he needs to talk to someone else in his firm that knows a little bit about open space, conservation values, ecological value, because this 6.2 acres offers none of what was provided in the originally proposed. And it's not just the 6.2 acres. Eight feet from the conservation land, what, we have eight feet? That does not meet our zoning requirements for a lot, right? 75 feet? There you go. But it's clear cut all the way around it. Additionally, the, let's call it what it is, the septic field, is in where the original, some of that land would have been given to the town. That now has a clear view. It not only detracts from the value of the open space that we're being gifted, it detracts from the value of the conservation land, where you're going to see, so I went to the site plan, I mean, I went to the balloon, you couldn't see the balloon. I mean, you could see it in the parking lot, but when you went up to Breakneck Hill, you couldn't see it. But you could see the red building that's there now. So when you're over there, in, looking through the woods, and you can sort of see a little bit of the red building still, I realized that that's all going to be wide open, and further back, you're going to see it, and five stories certainly up the hill. The goal is, when you're on that land, is to have, for people walking, to get some of the value of being outside in nature, not a clear cut shot to Route 9, five-story apartment building and the office buildings. Plus, the lighting's going to trespass, and the exhaust from the parking lot will be coming into, there'd be nothing to absorb it. And then you're giving the town a huge liability. And I'm not going to say, don't take the land, if that's all you're going to get, but I think we should absolutely fight for a site plan modification and say, this doesn't meet the 6.2 acres. The drainage swale, I mean, there's a, there's risk, there's liability, they're going to have to maintain it, so it can't count as a gift, right? They'll have to have an easement for that, with legal documents to maintain it. But on top of that, the denuded land, we're going to have to, I mean, if anyone here knows about invasive species, you open up a large area to sunlight, what's going to come in? Invasives. We're going to, are they going to replant it? Are they going to put trees in? Eventually, some trees will grow back, but not on the septic system, and call it what it is, it's a septic field. And at our meeting, I really just think the planning board needs to push for a review of the layout. This layout is unacceptable. It doesn't provide, it's like, oh, they, say somebody said they were required to give you a car, 1990 car, a Ford. And they said, okay, and here's, you agreed on it, and then you got a 1990 Ford, but it had no engine, and it has no tires. This is no different. This does not have the conservation value of what you were being offered. And I know that wasn't a good analogy, but the point is, this is not the same as what was on that plan. And the Open Space Commission, at our meeting, said, why not put the septic underneath the parking lot? And we thought that might be a little bit far-fetched for acceptance, but it's not our job to make sure everything is affordable for the project proponent. We want to see this, we were happy to see this moved off the hillside, but put the septic under the parking lot, and we thought that, we acknowledged it could be difficult, but we know it can be done. And, because the library's been talking about it for years, that's where the idea came from. And so we proposed that in our letter to you, in our meeting, what I was allowed to write to you. Subsequent to that, I reviewed the plans from this same project proponent for 352 Turnpike Road 40B. Guess where their septic is? Under the parking lot. So, you know, it's a no, it's a really good solution. Put the septic under the parking lot. All of this arguing about that will be over. Give us the six acres up and back, and be done. And the septic can go over where the original parking lot, parking garage was going to be? You know, I just really want to encourage that the project proponents seriously consider that, because this here does not equal what was on the site plan. And I don't know how town council can, with a straight face, tell you that it doesn't deserve a site plan modification, or if they just took the septic off the hillside and gave us the 6.2 acres, you wouldn't need a modification for that portion. So, I, if you're not going to have a planning board committee meeting there on Wednesday night, that concerns me, because I really think there needs to be some pushback. And we hired a town council that had a firm, and certainly there's someone in his firm that can argue, this does not meet the requirement of the site plan. Somebody there knows ecological, open space values, because this doesn't have what we were supposed to get. Thank you.
So just to be clear, the previous plan had the five-story building on that parcel?
We know that.
Okay.
We're very thankful for that. It's not there. But we also had 6.2 acres. You don't just accept a little bit when the end result is not that good.
Understood.
There is real negative value to this open space. And we were supposed to get 6.2 acres of treed land to add to our conservation land. And this here detracts from our conservation land, and it's going to be a huge expense for the town to manage that open space that's going to be just invasive species. Years of work to get it to be grown up into trees and shrubs and habitat.
Thank you. Yeah.
I just want to clarify that we are putting a letter together, and then I think Debbie's going to be there. I would be great if, I mean, it looks like you've pretty much written that letter, but it would be great if we could get the letter. It would, I mean, to send it, but even just if you read portions of it, so that it's the planning board's, you know, and we maybe can vote on that if, at the end of this session, to be able to say, we vote on it and would like Debbie to read it, she's willing to do that.
Well, just vote on the specifics. This is my very picky, that if this letter goes, they won't read any of it. So just the, you know, highlights, yep. Yes, sir?
Hi, Matt Probst, 31 Woodland Road. I represent an organization known as Friends of Breakneck Hill. We are a group of 41 families, we're all Southborough residents and users and abutters of Breakneck Hill, and we appreciate both the efforts of the planning board, as well as Mr. Farris, to bring more affordable housing to town. We continue, though, to state that the starting point of the conversation should be the conveyance of the 6.2 acres per the original line shown on the 2019 site plan. We also advocate for the consultation of the planning board in any modifications to the existing site plan, including this new proposed development. The developer needs to consult with and get approval from the planning board, not just ZBA. We have a couple of comments regarding, I've collected from our organization. With respect to the height, we're grateful that there was a balloon test done. There are still some concerns about the height, and as long as we can have some level of assurance that the height is not going to go above that level of the balloon, most members in our organization are happy with it. But I think with the wind, there's some concern that maybe it wasn't representative. I'm one of the closest abutters to the land. I've had, I couldn't see it directly from the land because of all my, all the trees. I put a drone up in the air, I had to go up to like 150 feet in the air to be able to see it, looking down, but I could see the balloon sort of moving around. So, there is some concern there, but at least we're glad that it's not up higher up on the hill on the land that was donated, so we're certainly great that that needs to be donated, we're grateful for that. It's vital, as has been discussed, that no trees or other vegetation be disturbed on any of the 6.2 acres that needs to be donated. And we are, we'd like to request a buffer zone between, a buffer of undisturbed trees of education between the conservation land and any sort of septic leach field. And as has been discussed, one proposed option would be to move and shift the leach field off of that land and put it under the parking lot, similar to what the same developers are already proposing at 352 Turnpike Road. And then the final comment that was made, and there's concern, is we appreciate any efforts, of course, towards minimizing noise associated with a site prep and the construction of the project. Thank you.
Anyone else? I think we want to discuss what we want in this letter.
So my recommendation would be, number one, conveyance of the 6.2 acres. No trees, no vegetation disturbed, no drainage swales, and 6.2 acres, as indicated on the original 2019 site plan.
And include no septic on there, then, right?
And no septic, yeah. Is that drainage swale?
Marnie, can you just quickly say that one more?
Sure. I said, number one would be, like, if we were to just kind of bullet point like our top five things for the ZBA, my first one would be, the conveyance of 6.2 acres must happen immediately and shouldn't be contingent on the approval of anything. The 6.2 acres should have no trees and no vegetation disturbed, and should not have any drainage swale sewage represented on the 6.2 acres. And then if it's, I still think we should state it, if it's, if it's different than the 6.2 acres that was originally part of the conditions of the 2019 approval, it should require site plan modification. I do agree with Ms. Gillespie. My second recommendation, and this is obviously up for discussion, would be around the building height. I mean, ideally, we would say three stories. We do have four stories in this town that are 40B, so I guess I'd be willing to go to four, but I think five is not okay. I don't think that's okay for our town. Number three, I would say, and Mimi, thank you for your very, very thorough diligence, because I think it was super helpful for me in putting my list together. Number three would be the waivers. No, specifically, they've asked for, it's like seven pages of waivers. We shouldn't, ZBA shouldn't make any general waivers. And specifically, the outdoor illumination, dark skies, really impacting conservation that abuts it in Breakneck Hill, they should not waive any outdoor illumination. They should not waive any outdoor illumination. And I think we should just ensure that it's ADA compliant. Number four would be, I'm going to say the affordability in perpetuity. And number five is that on the subdivision plans, they should meet the requirements of the law, which includes frontage lot lines. And I think your point around the frontage, like, they ask for a waiver of the frontage requirement, which is a law. I think we should probably pull that component out in their waiver requests. So I don't know if that's truly number five, or if it's still part of number, number three of the waivers. And those would be my recommendations. And so I really only have four versus five.
Thank you, Marnie. I would just say on the 6.2, that that is not contingent upon the approval of the 40B. It's not contingent upon the approval of the 40B. It's a condition of a previously approved site plan. And should, I think the septic in the parking lot's a good idea. Should we mention that?
Yeah, I think that is a good idea.
There's also 250s in the parking lot.
Oh, great, yeah. I think we say, like, similar proposals from this developer.
Oh, I had one other thing in my, my OCD time this Sunday. One of the requirements of the CBA regulations is that there's a list of all prior developments for projects within the past 10 years from this developer. And they list projects from some LA associates, who, I don't know who that is. It's not them. And I've never seen anyone from LA associates representing the proponents. So I don't know how that, what their projects for the last 10 years, how that complies with this. And has this proponent done any other projects?
Mimi, I think your minutia is really important, because when I think about Park Central and some of the other 40Bs, it was really the devil in the details. So I almost think that we should put together, like, major with the four or five bullets, and then minor. Clearly, maybe some of the ZBA members are not going to get to that. But even going through the list of waivers and saying, we agree with this one, we, we don't agree with that one. I mean, I, I think they'd, I think some members would appreciate the detail.
I didn't go through all the waivers. I just, when I saw the blanket, I just... Yes, ma'am.
So for open space in a subdivision is a requirement of our bylaw. And I understand 40B is exempt, but this whole parcel is not 40B, and didn't we run into this on Park Central? So which portion of this is not a 40B, which our bylaw requires 10% set aside in its natural space, natural state? And I don't know that there's natural space on the non-40B. And does the 4C count towards a subdivision? I mean, like, is it the subdivision, you have three lots, is it? Or four? I'm not sure, but you've got the office.
It's very difficult to tell.
It was, and I also agree with your point about the plans. Like, they have, in their legend, they show stone walls. And I've walked there, and I know there's stone walls, but there's no stone walls drawn on the plan. But I digress, but the, the lots were hard to find. And then you have the office buildings. That's not 40B. And the land, and I don't want to tempt anyone to not put 40B back on the hill, but that land should be included in 10% of the subdivision for open space. And then on top of that, you know, the Open Space Commission has to meet and discuss this, because we hadn't, but I'm just going to speak as a private citizen right now, okay? Put the septic under the parking lot. I'll forget about the 10%. You know, it's like, you can waive that. But I, I think you should make it be, it's a big deal for the Open Space Commission, and it's adjacent to conservation land. Just get the septic off the hillside and give us some reasonable, not clear-cut, graded land. And, and that would make a lot of this problem go away, I think. And I forgot, I hadn't looked at the 250, but I thought I heard that tonight. That also has septic under a parking lot? So just go with that. Thank you.
Do you have the highlights of the letter? The highlights?
I do.
Okay.
Do you, you obviously typed this, though. Is there something we can start with scratch?
So this is all the detailed detail, like this section.
But I, to Deb's point, I think that would actually be super appreciated by the ZBA. Where you can say, like, here's kind of an addendum. I know you guys are super busy. I might have some time to just pull something together quickly that you guys can further edit if it helps you.
Okay, I can send you all this. Does it help you?
If you insist. I only say that because, yeah, we're just a little bit here, but we're happy to take your help. And you guys are always so helpful everywhere.
I'm going on vacation tomorrow, otherwise I'd do it. So I'll send you this. Maybe I'll supplement it a little. So do we need to vote to send a letter, or?
No, I think it's a general consensus, right?
So is there anyone online that has any comment on this?
And you want this letter, once Marnie sends us the draft, we'll format it, like, give it a second eye, and send it back to if there's any changes. And then send it to the planning board members as a copying that we're sending it to the ZBA.
Yeah.
Do you want to see it again before?
No, I'll trust you, too.
Okay.
Because same meeting on Wednesday.
Right, so we have to get this done tomorrow, Wednesday morning, and then get it to Lara ASAP, and she'll distribute it. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
So onward with this one. So the next item on the agenda is 250 Turnpike Road 40B. I don't think, they're also scheduled for Wednesday, but there are no new plans. So there's not, I don't think anything. And then...
Brian is here still, so he might be...
Mr. Chevelle, have there been plans submitted on for 250?
40B.
The 40B?
My last name is pronounced Charville.
Charville.
And since meeting with the abutters the third week of July, at which time we discussed the townhomes approach, 32 townhomes on site, our engineering has been working on a full set of site plan drawings.
What's the 32? Oh, I thought it was 28 on the concept. Okay.
And so is that site plan being finalized, and that will be submitted as of yet?
But it hasn't, as of yet?
Correct.
Okay.
So we do not expect much substantive discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charville.
You're welcome.
So I think that's, that's it on that one, unless there's anybody who has a comment on that or online.
Six attendees, nobody with a rating.
No ratings, yes. Okay. Next item on the agenda is residents at Park Central. And that is not back until September 4th. And that doesn't appear to be going anywhere. I guess they haven't even done discovery yet.
So Mimi, again, and I don't know if this is proper, but based on the, the last discussion at ZBA with wanting an extension for a year, is it proper for this board to submit a letter saying, this has gone on basically long enough, and we wouldn't, we, as a planning board, wouldn't be supportive of another year extension? That ZBA has done a great job of trying to keep these hearings open, but the time has come, you know, that they, they need to take a position on the permit. Again, I don't know if that's proper. I don't know if it's something the planning board would consider doing. I plan on speaking to this myself, because I just think it's gone on long enough.
Will it be a year when do they start it?
I'm not sure when it exactly started, but they asked for an extension going into next year. So they basically gave them an extension through, was it September? Yeah. So I, I just think to go on potentially another year as you wait out this litigation is just kind of ludicrous. I think that the, my suggestion would be that the ZBA take a position.
It appeared from the last meeting that there's really not an appetite to continue it on, but they didn't want to make a decision because they were missing some members. So we can, if that is the, the will of the board, we can send another quick note, stop the madness.
I think we all know it's a clear intention for them to hold their line, their place in line for the 40B. And they'll be booted out now that there's a third 40B. So we have this opportunity to exercise. So I think it's either just, it might be helpful just to say now that the third submission has come, it's an opportunity for us to in, in, put our, whatever this, I want to call it the Sunshine Act, but that's, that's in biopharma, that is not in this. There's some, yeah, it's the, so I think we, yeah, the sunset clause. So I think we should probably state something and then just give a little bit of backup to say, why? Makes sense. Let others be heard.
I think that's, I think that's a great idea. I, I mean, I recognize the same. Obviously, you had some members, I think, that are not sure what to do, and keep the door open, and let's see what happens. And I think we heard a very interesting meeting, and it's pretty clear there's no, you know, some mixed views, and we'll see what happens in September. But I, I'd love to put something in writing from the board. I support it.
And I think it was pretty clear that this is, this could potentially be tied up, at the very least, until the two-year window closes for, for the, yeah, for the abutters and the, and the contract that they had, whatever. But I just, again, it was a little frustrating to watch, and I understand, and I appreciate. And I think we need to put that in the letter. We appreciate the job that ZBA has done and the due diligence on this as well. But it's just, the time has come to, yeah.
Karina, I'll take a first step at that, since Amara's doing the other one, and then I'll send it over your way.
Okay, I think that's it on that.
Mr. Rose, you waited around. Did you want to speak to this? I'm assuming that's why you hung around. Sorry, Mimi. Yeah, I'm sorry. I just figured he was here, so.
Park Central isn't until September.
Actually, thank you. No, I was here to hear the rest of the meeting and see it. I agree with a lot of what you said. As you know, I've been rather vocal at those meetings, so I don't think it needs any more discussion. I think you've hit it pretty well. Thank you.
Was your takeaway some, similar to the feeling I got at the last meeting, that there seemed to be running out of patience?
Yes, actually, that's multiple meetings. And it was due to timing with my impression, and I won't put words in their mouth, but it was because they kept having people absent. They pushed, in fact, they wanted to push it farther. The developer wanted to wait till October.
Right.
And I actually was one of the ones that stood up and said, no, we pushed this two weeks. We can push it another two weeks. And the only reason it's out to the 4th, I think, was against scheduling of who could be there. So once they have the whole board there, I'm hopeful they'll see what we're all seeing, that they're just trying to hold a place in line that they really shouldn't have yet, so. But that's just my opinion, of course.
Thank you. Are we ready for planners' report? Did you want us to do minutes first?
Why don't you do minutes first, and then I'll run through the planners' report, really?
Okay.
Either way, it's up to you.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from July 22nd, 2024.
A second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Demurya, yes?
Brasho, yes?
I make a motion to approve the July 31st, 2024 minutes.
A second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Demurya, yes?
Brasho, yes?
Okay. I have, so I have one administrative question that I meant to bring up under MBTA, but I didn't. The question is, we're going to the select board on the 17th for the tree hearing. Should we present them, the MBTA bylaw, at that time? And should we go to advisory before September 30th?
I just don't know. There's a lot of trees, and if it goes on the 17th, I don't know if the select board are going to want a condensed version, or to have, depending on what else they have on the agenda. We can certainly ask Mimi. It makes sense. We're all there. But at the same time...
I, I did ask and got a receptive response.
Okay, forget I said anything.
But I can get more details.
We'll also note, the warrant goes to print at a certain date. So we need to put the draft, Warren article, the bylaw, into, we have to provide it to executive assistant. So when was the deadline for that? Do you remember?
They have to sign the warrant 16th?
The 16th, they're closing it the 3rd. I thought it was the 3rd.
I, I checked with Katie just the other day, and she said they have to sign it by the 16th. So they should have signed it earlier.
Sign warrant by September 16th? So our next meeting is the 9th?
So we can already get her the draft. We can already get Melanie Atsuko the draft that we have now, so that she can already get it mostly in there, I would imagine. And then unless you vote tonight to use that for the warrant, if you anticipate any changes.
We'll, we'll see on the 9th.
Wait till the 9th? And then we can get it to them quickly right after that, so she can update that.
We sent it to Margaret. Check it out tomorrow.
Sent it to?
Margaret Hurley, the bylaw.
Okay. Was that, is that, was that a plan? You sent it to Margaret Hurley, or you want to send it to Margaret?
No, that was, that went with the, the pre-approval package.
Yes.
Goes to Margaret and to Chris.
Went to Margaret and to, um...
Chris.
Chris Klutchman, right. Okay, sorry.
All right, sorry. That's, that's all. So I should make plans for advisory and follow up with select board. Okay.
So presenting at the 17th, at the same date as the tree hearing? Okay. Okay. Planners' report, quickly. Okay. I forwarded you an email from Margaret Hurley, that she's taken on a new role at the Attorney General's Office. If you hadn't seen that, I sent that out August 14th. You have an email. Her new position, Senior Counsel for Housing and... She'd have an email. Her new position, Senior Counsel for Housing and Municipal Law. But she gave her number. Um, Southborough announces tricentennial celebrations. Brought an email on that. That would be probably under, um, the Tricentennial Committee's webpage if they have one or the select board. Announced a plans for a series, the, recently the Southborough Matt, uh, Select Board announced plans for a series of celebratory events to mark the 300th anniversary of the town's founding, um, on July 6th, 1727. The 2027 airs will be marked with a series of town commemoratives and family oriented events and the organizing and planning is underway now. Then, um, the housing bill, bond bill 4977 related heavily to accessory dwelling units by right, um, passed. And there's a lot of information on that and there's workshops coming up, et cetera. So that's going to be on the horizon to see what we have to do for that.
Can we maybe put that on the future agenda? In terms of what would we need to do? Do we do nothing or do we need to clean up our zoning law to, you know, adhere to the new law? Like, I'm a little confused as to.
So our, so our current zoning is a, a special permit, so that it would not comply. My, my confusion is that supposedly it goes into effect in 180 days, which is February. But they were going to promulgate regulations, which we know from MBTA, the law, we had no idea what was going on and then the regulations was all the, you know, minutia. So I don't know. And it took a long time for the regulations to be finalized after the, this is much easier than that, but still, I would be hesitant to change anything until we knew exactly.
Yeah. I do think there's definitions and things because, you know, we, we, we say accessory apartments. They're using ADUs. I mean, there's, there's probably a little bit more than normal cleanup. But yeah, we have to wait, I guess.
Also, um, Town Council provided an advisory, which I.
Yeah, that was very nice.
So maybe that explains something. So we're just getting into that. I think, um, some of us have already signed up for workshops on that.
Yeah. And um, I know a few other. I knew a few other town councils that have sent out advisories too, so we can look at a bunch.
Yeah. So in agreement that it, we should put that on a future.
Yeah, sometime. Put on future agenda. Say, um, um, let me just check my thing here. So, um, no significant project updates at this time. Uh, One Stop Grant Route 9 Study, I don't have any additional information on that. There is a draft warrant for review. Um, usually we find that in the most current select board's meeting packet. Um, I haven't heard anything on the Chapter 61A North Borough properties.
Can we go back to draft warrant?
Yes.
So the, the warrant that is in the Dropbox is evidently an old one because at the last meeting they have MBTA after the consent agenda. So they, although it's up to the moderator, the thought was some of those, you know, change the membership on some committees or get rid of a committee that hasn't been active for 3,000 years. Those things would go on the consent agenda and then it would be MBTA. And that warrant in our, uh, Dropbox still shows us at 10, but that has changed and um, the, uh, Select Board Chair and, um, Marguerite lobbied hard for that.
So we have the new version?
I, I checked today and, um, I haven't, didn't receive anything. I said, I knew that it was updated at your last meeting.
Okay.
Do you have another copy? And I haven't gotten, they haven't gotten back to me.
Okay.
Yeah, and some things like the, um, Stormwater Enterprise Fund and changing the CPA surcharge were taken off.
Yeah. Okay. And then, um, the upcoming National Grid Tree Hearing for the Hazard Tree List provided, that's a little bit on a standstill right now. We have to regroup with National Grid tomorrow and the tree policy has a defined process that, um, was kind of circumvented. So we're going to guide National Grid in, to the right path and work with Chris Leroy to help him achieve the proper process for that. So the lists you did receive, there were some errors in them. Um, so we're straightening that out.
But can you remind me about the arborists and the process on that? Because I found there, there was a little blurb or something in one of the versions that I had seen earlier, I guess. And there was not a lot of information. So is our process when we get something from National Grid that we have no opportunity to ask or speak to their arborist? And no opportunity to speak to our, our arborist? Or is our arborist also going to look at the trees?
That was the issue.
That's the issue. Okay.
So, um, they submitted, they're supposed to actually go to the tree warden, tree warden designee first with their list. So the applicant will go there, review their list with the tree warden designee, who provides his recommendations into the spreadsheet. So you'll have a column there with the trees identified, blah, 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 and his recommendations. Then if a tree is to be removed and is not dead, the town's arborist, consulting arborist, is supposed to report on his recommendation, whether the trim or remove, et cetera.
Prior, he's supposed to notify the select board and the planning board when he's, well, not him, the designee, the planning board and the select board, when the town arborist will be viewing the trees. Not that they don't, he doesn't have to coordinate with us just so we know those dates so we can go if we're available. But that has been the, um, Mount Everest.
Yeah, particularly in this case because there's this feeling that there's a lot of trees on the list and that, you know, it creates a caravan and, well, and we just said, well, we just want to have the opportunity to be know whether you text or call someone to say, I plan to be out there tomorrow and I'm starting at this place at this time. If people don't, if members don't show up and he, he's not supposed to stand around and wait, he can just continue and you catch up. So that's kind of a stickling point. But the idea that he doesn't, they, the applicant does have to go to the tree warden designee first. Get all his ducks in a row as to what's a public shade tree. Are there public shade, are there trees that are not public shade trees on the list? Right? All these things so that now you have a defined list. Then they send an application to the planning board for scenic road tree removal. We look at it. If it's all in order and complete, then we send a copy to the select board as well and file it with the town clerk. And the process then continues like a normal hearing.
Yeah, that was the other issue. There were trees on Woodland Road that were way back. They were either on the town forest or on Breakneck Hill. They were in wetlands. I, I'm not an expert, but I don't think they were in the right way. But that's supposed to be, the, uh, tree warden designee is supposed to say, well, if that's a public shade tree, because if it's not, it's not within our jurisdiction or the tree warden's jurisdiction. So I did send an email to Melissa Danzans with the, those trees and she said she'd go and, uh, look at them and that it should go before the CONCON. Cause they, cause those properties are under the care and control of the Conservation Commission. And a lot of them were in wetlands.
And if I can add too, so the arborist is already, the town arborist has already gone out and looked at some trees. I ran into him the other day on Parkerville. So I don't know how that's going to fare as we go forward because he's already been looking. And so if they tell us now that while he's going on these roads, we have, may have missed out on an opportunity on 75%, who knows? Cause I mean, 50 some trees were on Parkerville alone. So, and he was already looking at them. I ran into him at the entrance to, um, Neri. So.
Did you happen to ask him if he could, if he heard that he should reach out to us?
No.
He didn't? Okay. And also Chris Leroy is on, has been on vacation last week and this week. So he's been out right at this time. So, um, we're going to speak with National Grid likely tomorrow. I think we have a, a meeting scheduled for 10?
10 AM.
And regroup with them because they posted the trees. See, we were under the impression that Chris Leroy posted the trees, but in this case, there were so many. I'm guessing he said, National Grid, go post them. But what happened is the posting was not necessarily vetted by the tree warden designee. So the posting is incorrect. It doesn't include, um, the planning board as part of the consolidated hearing, which is listed on the posting.
And then also. Post everything.
They will. They have to, but not until the tree warden designee looks at the posting and says, you can use this posting. I think that's what should have happened initially. So, um, it's a larger list. I think we run into problems when we have these larger lists because of them.
Well, that was one of my questions is how do we get such a large list? Like, don't, don't they look one year, three years, five years and know which trees are grow, I mean, trees don't just suddenly grow.
Right.
Don't they have any kind of a plan? I, I misunderstood and I thought that they had like a vegetative management plan or something. And that, you know, we can look at a tree and say, well, this one's all right this year. Let's check it in six months or a year. Maybe we'll put it on the left, this list for the next five years. How did, how did every live tree on Parkerville get, get put on this list? And many, I'm sure we're going to hear on Deerfoot and, uh, on Flag.
Flag, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, how, how did that happen?
So they have a vegetation management plan that, that allows them, and I don't, they have certain areas that encompass that plan for the year and I don't know off the hand what this year's plan encompassed. Um, they don't have.
Right? They give us those.
Yeah, yeah. And in that they can trim, once that plan's approved, they can trim and remove anything up to, um, eight inches. But they don't have a hazard management plan, but evidently these particular circuits have had a lot of outages on. So that's why they're going through and, um, taking anything that, that looks, looks at a wire down.
Even ones that aren't near the wires.
Yeah.
Across the street, down the road.
Yes, sir.
But it did come last year.
First of all, thank you, uh, for all that information because that's the first time we've heard any of that process that apparently isn't being followed. So, so thank you on that. The notices on the trees seem to be generic. So there's no discussion on the notices that are, are they going to take the tree down? Are they going to trim the tree? It just says, right, I don't remember the wording exactly, but I, I was taken back as I drive around town and if, especially if we're a tree town, I know we couldn't, we talked about trees today quite a bit. Uh, there's a tree at the corner of, uh, what is it? Uh, Flag and Deerfoot that we couldn't move and reset the road because that tree mattered. And that, but yet we're plowing down this road, um, and I drive Flag every day and there's 20 some odd, 30 trees. For our tree-lined road in a tree town, that it, it almost looks like there's an alternative motive. Uh, if I was a conspiracy theorist, like there's a sidewalk or something that they want to cut down the trees. Um, and we look at these trees, not only is the trees that they are, um, but traffic mitigation. You have to slow down on that curve because there's a tree if you don't. And that's one of the trees that has a big sign on it that says, so now you take that down, you clear the stump and now instead of slowing down to 20 on that curve, you're going straight through where the kids are walking to school. Parkerville, I still don't understand because there's a sidewalk and they're still putting down all these trees and they're on the opposite side of where the power lines are.
Yep.
Um, so I was wondering if they were just going to trim some of the branches above that were growing across, but there's no indication. It just looks like they're going to take down all the trees. And there's other towns, places around town. It just seems for a, a tree town, it's excessive. Um, and from not speaking for it, but I'm on advisory, what's the cost to take down these trees?
Well, this is, this is National Grid.
Have you gotten your electric bill?
Are they going to pay for all of it? That hasn't been the case. So.
So your, your electric bill may go up, but your taxes won't.
That's a good sign anyway, but do we have, you know, do they have the end all be all? Do we have some saying? Is this at the tree hearing? What happens if we say no? What's the, is, you know, I'm wondering what National Grid's fight back is. It's like, well, when your power goes out, don't tell us. But we had, it's excessive. We need to find a way to, to trim this back. If a tree is truly dead, and there are some trees that are truly dead, but there's one that's, you know, it's an oak and it, you know, from having oaks in my yard, I know it trims, you know, it sheds some lower branches and the, and the rest of the tree is healthy. Just trim those dead branches and it's fine. So I guess some clarification of what was we doing, doing on each tree before the hearing would be appreciated. And I know that's not necessarily something you can do, but if you have any power to assist with that.
Yeah, that should be on the notification, what the action is. So there were a lot of issues. They sent out this list that had pictures of trees and, um, a description of the tree and then the tree number and then a spreadsheet with the numbers and every, well, if you look at, the two don't match. They matched up to 44 and then they don't match. So it makes a difference what, when you're voting on tree number 60, what number 60 actually is. And then there were, um, trees on the spreadsheet that said trim, but on the pictures said remove. So there was a.
Appreciate the need.
There were a lot of headaches.
Of course, they buried and we wouldn't have this problem, but.
Yeah.
Um, and I, so I appreciate needing, you know, needing power, but there's got to be a, a compromise. I mean, for a tree-lined road that there's trees that have been here a lot longer than the power lines, that they just, their answer is, you know, and we're gone, is, is problematic. Well.
So the cart was a little bit before the horse on this one and that's why, um, we don't have a complete application yet. And but once we do, that list will be, uh, posted on a website and we'll have a copy of it here, but there were issues with it. So we're trying to rectify that and then we'll.
And with that many trees, how long in advance can you get that to actually, it's going to take some studying time for, for you as well as us. So. You know, so if we get it a week before the hearing, that really doesn't.
Well, it has to be posted in the paper as well to consecutive weeks. Yeah. So.
Two weeks is.
In addition.
How many trees are we talking?
Hundred, 113.
113. Lisa and I looked at them once and we get to do it again.
We did. It was an enjoyable seven hours.
Set your, get your steps in as you're doing it.
We did. I didn't have to walk anymore after that.
Thank you for whatever we can do.
Grant Barrington, 58 Flag Road. I didn't think I'd be talking about trees tonight, but here we are. Just, well, I, first I want to echo everything that Howard said. You know, it's just kind of shocking going around town, seeing so many up, especially on, uh, at least on Flag, every large tree, you know, anything over 30 inches pretty much is. Okay, yeah, one. Uh, including, I, I might add, the one that we literally just had a hearing on that I objected to, you know, it was, it was, um, it ended up being trimmed and now, of course, we're going to have another hearing on whether or not to remove it like a month later, which is crazy, but, um, I guess my question is about timing. So I know that this, you know, it's been going on for a couple of months now, but, um, this hearing is for the September 17th. It sounds like there's been a lot of issues on your end, you know, not your fault, but like issues in terms of wrong postings. You guys don't have any arborist reports yet. You know, you don't really, other than seeing it, you're not really super informed about each of the, of the trees. Uh, first I would just say, you know, I'd kind of wait to make any decisions on any, any of the trees until you're fully informed. Also, I don't know if it was National Grid who made this statement or if it was you, but I would, I would consider, you know, delaying the hearing or something to give yourselves more time to actually, uh, have a proper posting and, um, actually learn about the, the trees. As I said, I'll be objecting to just about all of them. I think I might object to all out of principle because I don't think that we should be cutting up, down 115 trees in town, but, um, still haven't figured out exactly which ones I'll be objecting to. Um, I guess the other thing I'll add is I know that this is the fourth or fifth batch of, large batch of trees, um, that we've had, you know, come before us. And I know that I brought up, uh, you know, replanting previously and that has not happened yet. Something, you know, related to the, uh, urban forestry plan or something, but I think Freddie always likes to say the, the, um, best day to, best time to plant a tree was yesterday or something. So some of these are going on three or four years. So you could have a four-year-old sapling if we had planted it four years ago. So, I would encourage us to maybe not wait for that plan and just start planting. Thanks.
One quick thing. What time is that meeting? It's not posted yet.
Sorry?
Oh.
What time is the tree hearing? It's not on the website.
Six, 6:30 on the 17th.
Well, it hasn't been posted yet.
That's the plan. That's the plan.
Select board meeting.
That's the plan. Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else on the, on the planners' report?
Nope, that's it. Just the next, um, meeting is September 9th and, um, I guess you heard from Katie Berry that, um, they have to sign the warrant on the 16th of September.
They have to post it.
They have to post it on September 16th. Therefore, they're going to sign it the week before. So if that's, then if we have a meeting on the 9th, they're going to sign it on the 10th.
Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
My second.
I have a motion in a second. I need to. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Lee Han, yes?
Demiria, yes?
Rasha, yes.
You've been recording, right?